Point of information Chair.
Sorry about that. Standby, hold on, we're gonna, we're just opening up right now. So again, the Wahihua-Witmore Village Neighborhood Board number 26 is, is in order, and we're gonna start with doing our, our, um, our roll call.
Uh, charisma.
Here.
Francher. Harvest. Manley Cott. Sorry. Mendelson. Miller. Umaki. Yamamoto. Ishikawa.
Here.
Alright, we have Quorum Chair.
We have Quorum. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, moving on to item three on our agenda, we have our first responder, monthly reports.
I'm sorry, point of information Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, based on the fact that last month's meeting was canceled due to a pending issue with OIP and the NCO against the Chair, and our meeting was canceled, I would make a motion that the Chair, until that issue is fully adjudicated and notice goes out of the process and the result, I would ask that the Chair temporarily be, uh, removed and that our Vice Chair run the meetings until such time that that issue with the NCO is resolved.
Alright, pardon me, yeah, just for clarification. Um, so the removal of an officer is a very large item, and that would be, definitely need to be listed on the agenda.
Actually, not removal of the office, just temporarily not chair the board meetings, because I was not given an opportunity to speak to this issue until now.
Uh, regardless, that would be, you're asking the Chairperson to no longer be the Chairperson for this meeting.
Correct.
That could be a, a request, um, but the motion is out of order.
So where would you like me to make the motion, sir?
At the next meeting, if it's properly listed on the agenda.
Then, then the issue that canceled last month's meeting has not yet been adjudicated. So how can we come together at, at the next meeting and act as if the motion did not happen?
Um, in my opinion, the last meeting should not have been canceled. We should have continued. Um, several boards would have a complaint, be ongoing with the Commission.
Well, now that, now that we're a month out, it's too late to say that the motion from last month should not have happened. That should have been said at the last meeting.
I was not here at the last meeting, I'm filling in, uh, but basically, your motion is out of order, and we should continue with this meeting, as we do have a full house.
It, it doesn't matter.
Has to do with the Commission, and I believe it has to do with the Office of Information Practices.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to say that I was the one that brought a complaint against Chair Ishikawa. Back in March, there was a meeting, and in July, a meet, I was called by Chair Ishikawa, and I was ordered to come to a meeting at the Wahihua Library.
Madam Chair, call a recess, this is out of order.
Thank you.
Hold on, we're talking to the NE.
Alright, so, uh, please bear with us. Your issue relies with the Commission, and further, the Office of Information Practices. If you disrupt the meeting, the Chairperson may expel any person from the meeting, so please keep that in mind. We do have a lot of people here, and we have a full agenda to get to.
Well, we had a lot of people at the last meeting, and we had a full agenda at the last meeting. So how can the Chair, in good conscience, sit here and chair the meeting? So my motion will be disregarded, can I make sure that that's part of the record? Because no, no community member, nor any board member should be bullied into doing something that's not, that's not right.
To speed this along, is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, it's regar-
Sorry, Joe Francher just had, asked a question.
You talked about her motion.
Her motion.
Um, we're moving on? Okay, calling, uh, we apologize, everyone, for, uh, the delay. We are in section item three on the agenda, and we call up our fire department.
Can you hear me? Check?
You can.
Good evening, everyone. Captain Ben Casemiro, Station 16, Wahihua. Um, I'm here with the statistics for September 2023. Uh, for fires, we had one structure fire, one brush fire, six activated alarms. For other emergencies, we had 58 medical calls, four motor vehicle crash collisions. Um, I'll be go, going over this fire safety tip. Uh, this is Fire Prevention Month, so the National Fire Protection Association sponsors Fire Prevention Week, uh, which is observed from October 8th to the 14th. As the national campaign is promoted throughout the month of October, this year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. Did you know cooking fires are the leading cause of home fires and home fire injuries? Unattended cooking is the leading cause of cooking fires and deaths. What can you do? The good news is, you can prevent most cooking fires and burns. Help keep your family safer with these simple but effective tips. Turn pot handles toward the back of the stove. Always keep a lid on, lid nearby when cooking. If a small grease fire starts, slide the lid over the pan and turn off the burner. Watch what you heat. Set a timer to remind you that you're cooking. And have a kid slash pet-free zone of at least three feet around the stove and areas where hot food or drink is prepared or carried. And that's all I have for this month. Are there any questions?
Questions from the Board. Any questions for our fire department? Yes, go ahead, June.
Just like, like to commend the, uh, fire department for their great work, to include the fire that occurred last month and the week before, because I saw you guys out there when the high winds were hitting this area, and you guys were running around crazy, I saw, and that, uh, you guys put out a lot of what potentially could have been very bad fires.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's just part of my job.
Um, go ahead.
Question I have is that news from the Maui fire are talking about toxins that they're find, finding. So in regular fires that we have here, does anyone test to see any toxins out there after the fire is gone?
Uh, we have fire investig, we have fire investigators that will come in, uh, after the fire is done, uh, but their main job is to try and figure out what started the fire. Most times, if there is, uh, something they want to try and find in the ash, they'll, they'll ask for independent study, some kind of independent investigator to come out and find out those, uh, findings from them. But that's usually done by the homeowner, homeowner or the business.
Okay, so in other words, that we have a fire here, don't go rushing onto the site until it's been tested.
Yeah, definitely. Try and stay, and, and because it's not just, uh, the unseen hazards, it's also like mechanical hazards, physical hazards out there that you could get hurt by. So yeah, if it's, it's a building that's just been burned, you just kinda wanna stay away from that until it's deemed safe by HFD and also, uh, other agencies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, thanks for being here. Um, just really quickly, are you folks working with the Hawaii, um, wildfire management organization to, uh, develop a fire-wise community here? I know that they're doing that work over on the Leeward Coast, and I'm wondering if that's beginning to start in Central, because we have so many fires.
Yeah, it's beginning, but it's more on a, uh, kinda admin level at this point. And then, um, I, I guess one day, once they come out with their findings, they're gonna come and help deliver that to us, and then we can push that towards the community.
Okay.
But I can get more information for you and get back to you at the next meeting.
Yes, please. Uh, and also, you can connect with Jeanne. Thanks.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from the Board? Yes, Erin.
Hi, thank you as well for being here. Um, kind of inquiry regarding the fire that was at Kukani Local, maybe like a month ago, where, you know, and you can kinda see the aftershocks for the burned area. And I know that it has sort of a five-acre buffer around it, and what is the special provisions for that sacred site? Is it just, um, because I think the rest of the area around it was bushes, right, and shrubs, and then just that area is, is it order of priority to take care of?
Yeah, I think for us, it's, you know, it's life first and property. So definitely, with no lives in danger, the next major property there was, were the stones, so we made that a priority. So we had two trucks kinda just stay around that area. But they do a good job over there, and they keep a kinda wide fire break, which helped us out a lot. Yeah. But did that kinda answer your question? Yeah. Yeah, that is a priority, definitely, yeah.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay, virtually, any questions for our fire department? Any hands? Okay, no questions virtually. Questions from the public for our fire department? No, okay, and I, I believe Captain, you have some?
Yeah, we have, um, some Fire Prevention Week stickers, magnets, some posters here. Go ahead and help you guys out, we have a lot of extras, so, before you leave.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, calling up our police department.
Good evening Chair, good evening Board members, and good evening community members. My name is Tim Minima with the Honolulu Police Department, I'm part of the community policing team. Uh, Shane cannot be here today, but I will be filling in, and as always, if you have questions, hard questions, save it for him. Uh, as for me, uh, I just wanna start off with the stats. So for Wahihua, uh, we just, we had five assaults. One burglary to a home, one burglary to a business, one car break-in, I'm sorry, this is, this stat is from October 1st to now, and one robbery. And this robbery was not, no weapons were used, it was, uh, item was taken by physical force. And the tip I wanna talk about for this month is, obviously for Halloween, we encourage our community members, especially our parents, when your kids go out, always examine the candy first before eating it. Travel, if, if you decide to go with your kids, always have an adult there present with the kid, with the groups. Always travel in groups or pairs, and wear light clothing, and if your Halloween is a dark clothing, try to have a reflector on you, and carry a flashlight. And for those who are old enough to drink, please don't drive as well. Uh, please keep our streets safe, and that's the tips I have for this month. And if you are curious what's happening in your community, always go on HonoluluPD.org and crime, go on our crime mapping section to see what's happening in the Wahihua community. That's all I have. Any other questions? Easy questions.
Easy questions. Any questions from the Board for Police Department? Yes, Joe?
Uh, concerning Rose Street and the number of mopeds and motorcycles that scream up and down the street daily, every day, what are you guys doing about it?
So for that, I, I encourage you, especially if you live on Rose Street, please call 911, definitely, um, and have an officer, and just meet with the officer, explain that, explain to the officer the problem. Uh, because I know Rose Street, we have other problems we're dealing with right now, especially with the middle scoop. Uh, so we are addressing, uh, we're addressing it, but we need the, the community's support. If you do see something, please definitely call us, and we'll meet with you and try to talk with you.
There's a lot of underage drivers out doing this.
Oh, yes.
Um, thank you, Officer, for everything that you do for our community and in the police department. We really appreciate you. Um, we know you're busy. Uh, noticed here in Wahihua, Mililani, Waipio, lot more graffiti is coming up, and it, I, I'm just wondering if they're just taggers that are just, you know, expressing their art, or if they're, if it's gang-related, or what, um, do you have any information for us on that?
So regarding graffiti, the, the ones we're seeing in the Mililani area, the Wahihua area, I can't say too much about the North Shore area, but it is always the same, um, person doing it. Unfortunately, we, unless someone catches him in the act doing it, or we have cameras catching, we, it's hard to, uh, we can't make a case unless someone sees it. But we are, we are, we do have our, uh, cleanup projects where we're trying to address these graffiti. We do it once a month, so if you are interested in hosting a graffiti cleanup project, please reach out to me or, or you can call us on, you can call our number, I think it's 808-723-8710, and I can try coordinate with you to do a graffiti cleanup project.
Um, just to, oh, yes, go ahead, sir. Can you tell us your name? Um, come to a mic?
They're roaring up and down the street, five, I'm not gonna be calling 911 every time they go up and down.
The light which we, or, or?
Sir, we also have, uh, about 12 people online that can't hear you.
Hold on, they can't hear me. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, there's no way I'm gonna be calling 911 every time they go up and down that road. They were going up that road at 6:30 PM tonight. They were going up that road at 5:30 PM. They make a bunch of, uh, loud noise and they disappear. There's no way I'm gonna be calling 911. And for what? They'll just disappear. And it's a pain in the neck. It's so loud. And it's not just the kids, it's some of the adults who are just as loud in their cars. I mean, you know, I, uh, it's, it's insane. Um, and it's been going on forever. And I know you guys have been trying to patch up their little field day into the military property, and they've just torn down the fence repeatedly. I, I, I like to trespass on the military land, walking my dog. Uh, and the military don't seem to mind. In fact, they don't even see me. I see them before they see me. Yeah, anyway, so, yeah, but, you know, this is, this is, this is not just the kids, it's the, it's their parents too. I don't, I'm not, I, you know, but the noise, apparently people are, don't think noise is that important. But it's really irritating. I would really like to do something illegal, but I won't. You know, I'd like to have a slingshot with some lily coy and whack them, but I won't. But this is, this is what's going on every day. Anyway, that's all I'm gonna say.
No, and I, I just wanna, um, I wanna add to your, your issue, because I will share, I have already shared this story once before, but I actually, I had a scary incident. I was coming home from work, and it was about nine-ish or so, and four motor dirt bikers came riding up alongside me, so two on either side of my car. And I was, uh, so I'm going up, and I, I was slowing down, they would slow, I was, I would pick up, so I called 911 on the phone, and I said, I know I'm not supposed to be calling you, but I'm calling you right now, because there are four dirt bikers, like, riding alongside of me, and, and then they, and right when we got up to, like, right around Uluku Street, they took off, but, so I, I understand that, that was-
They're very cagey. I mean, I, I, good luck, I, you, you'll be a hard time trying to catch them, frankly.
Yeah, it is, it is.
But it's happening all the time. I mean, it happened a half hour ago at 6:30.
Yep.
Excuse me.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Would he be able to take video and his act?
So you guess, you can't take video, the only problem with videos is a lot of these dirt bikers, unless, right, a lot of them do wear helmets. If they aren't wearing a helmet, we gotta try to identify who these guys are, and, and if they're driving reckless. Just showing them ri, riding a video on the road, uh, it, first of all, you can't be riding a dirt bike on the road, so we can get a violation.
That's illegal.
But, yeah, but if, but we just need someone to identify, so somebody needs to come forward and say, yeah, I know who that is, that's so-and-so's kid. But, ah, that's the problem we're having is, I, for this, I can't say too much about this community, but North Shore community, we know who's, um, the community know who's, who's doing, who's riding these dirt bikes. But no one wants to come forward and rat their neighbors out, and say, hey, it's that boy right there. So usually, like, sorry, usually like this, we always try to find ways to work with the community, like, how can we work together to try to address this? If we, if the community knows, hey, so-and-so lives on Rose Street, they're the guys riding the dirt bikes over there, as a community, we can come together and just knock on the door and say, hey, so-and-so said that your, your kids are riding dirt bikes, just letting you guys know he can't be riding dirt bikes. The problem is, we're not getting that, that, um, that cooperation from the community, and no one wants to, like, I hate to say, they don't wanna rat each other out. So without that, without that community's support, we, it's hard for us to enforce, unless we're there. But I'll tell you, there's, in the Wahihua community, there's other areas where the communities are saying, hey, we need officers posted at Lakeview, we need officers posted on the freeway because of speeding, so we're getting a lot of requests. So please bear with us.
It's fine. I mean, the kids need something to do. I'm fine for letting them go roar around on the military property. I mean, that's fine. I, you know what? It's better than drugs. I mean, maybe if they had a place to do this stuff, that's fine. I just don't like it right down the street in the, you know, at all crazy hours. I mean, you know, I see the kids when I, walking on the military property, and I say hi, and it's fine with me if you wanna pick up dust in there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for sharing your concern, you know, and I'm, I'm sure HPD has gotten this request, um-
Yes.
-repeatedly, so-
Okay.
So together, we'll maybe one day figure out something.
Alright, yeah, whatever.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, thank you. Okay, any other questions for our police department? Oh, online, we, virtual? Linnell, you have a question?
Yes, I would, I was wondering if the officer could explain to this group the difference in packing, between riding a scooter or riding on a moped, because that's also a big problem, as well as on the, uh, the North Shore. I don't think everyone is clear about the rules about that. Can you clarify that, sir?
Yes, so, uh, in Hawaii, you cannot pack on a scooter, moped, uh, it, motorcycles you can, but yeah, those two, I, those two things, you, you cannot pack, especially even, uh, e-bikes, electric bikes, we see it a lot. Kids packing each other, you cannot pack on that as well. And I believe packing is a monetary fine, I can't tell you how much, I forgot, I can't, I gotta look at my book, but it is a monetary fine, you don't go to court, and please be aware of that. If you see your neighbors doing it, your friends doing it, just remind them not to pack each other. Packing, two people are riding one motorcycle, thank you.
Yeah, sir, so if there is a monetary fine, or if you just give them a warning, if these kids are packing each other and going to their middle school or to the high school, then maybe at that point and time, they could be warned, because like, in so many other issues that we have in this whole district, is that if the rules and laws are not enforced, they'll just continue to do whatever they want to do. Now, as we all know, every two weeks, somebody dies on a moped, in a moped accident, and it would be a real bad thing if these kids are riding their mopeds, packing their friends, and going to school, you know, or communicate that with the schools, and the schools can make that kind of an announcement. But things need to get done, and not just say that, you know, people don't wanna report it. If the police see these things, they need to warn these kids. I mean, you know, I know it's nice to cruise in your cruiser with the air con on, especially the days have been so hot, but one day soon, these are all accidents waiting to happen. So there needs to be, you know, take the initiative, warn these kids, give them tickets, and if that doesn't work, notify the parents. But yeah, I, I'm glad you cleared that up, because I think a lot of people don't realize that this is totally, um, against the law to be packing on these things. Thank you.
And you're welcome. And just to, uh, let everybody know, we, I'm currently working with our, I think I'm gonna have a meeting with the Vice Principals, uh, in November, in mid-November, and we're gonna try, work together to try and get all the schools in, in, in our area on the same page, where about e-bikes, about the scooters, so that everyone's on the same page, where we're not gonna, you know, technically, these kids can't be riding e-bikes, uh, they can't be packing. So if we're all on the same page educating the kids, hopefully, this should mitigate that packing problem. And if not, like I said, we are gonna start, after that meeting, we are gonna definitely more, um, do more enforcement on these kids, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, thank you, Linnell, it's nice to see you again. And I see Dean's hand up. Dean?
Oh, good evening, guys, uh, from New Mexico. Uh, uh, sir, uh, my question is, you know, we require vehicles to have license tags, we require motorcycles to have license tags, we require bicycles to have license tags. Why isn't the police department working with the city council to push an issue up to the state to require motorbikes to be registered and tagged? This way, they will be much easier to identify, not only by the physical description of the operator, but by a license plate.
That's way above my P level, but I, I would take note of that.
Good answer. Yeah, if you could actually just take it back to your command, and see if you can get your legislative team to work with council to present something to our state representatives to get, uh, because I go back a long way, and dirt bikes have been the same problem over and over and over. And I live on local drive, and I got the same issue that's on Rose. So I, you know, I know about it, and, and, you know, you just gotta deal with it, or, or like, you said, call 911, uh, you know, so that's one of the things that I'd like to see HPD push a program, or something to get forward up to the state level to get these bikes tagged.
Dean, if you tag the bikes, that means that they're legal to be on the road.
Correct.
Right now, not legal.
Correct. I, I'm aware of that, Joe, but I'm, what I'm saying is that we have all these issues of unidentified, unidentified bikes. You know, they're on the road anyway. Let's license them and get them, first of all, make the, make the dirt bikes a little bit more, uh, C higher, but thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Thank you, Joe, for the discussion. Any other questions for our police department? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. Don't forget to take some HFD, my, my, just kidding. And calling up everyone, we, at this point, we're on section four, and, and we're all very excited about this. Um, item four on our agenda is very, very special to our Wahihua community, our Whitmore community, our military kids who go to Lelehuah High School. So today, everyone, um, Joe or June, do, are you guys ready? Can you meet, can I introduce everyone to Ms. Jackie Frazier, who is the 2024 Hawaii State Teacher of the Year? She has awarded that recently. Let's welcome her. And she's due next week. And that's why the delay is, is the way it is. Yeah. And Jackie, if you could go to the mic, we're just gonna ask you a couple questions, um, we won't keep you standing that long.
Hello, hello?
Hi, Jackie, can you tell us how long you've been at Lelehuah High School and, and your background, because you actually are a Lelehuah graduate?
Yeah, so I graduated in 2005 from Lelehuah High School. I'm a Wahihua girl. I went to Wahihua, uh, elementary, Wahihua Middle School, Lelehuah. Um, I took over for Mr. Wong. I was supposed to be an elementary school teacher, but, uh, Mr. Wong asked me, as soon as I got my degree, if I would be willing to take, uh, the position, because I was in agriculture my whole high school career, and my dad was also there. He retired from heavy equipment when I was a freshman, and growing up, I didn't get to spend time with my dad, because he was always working. So I took Ag, just so I could spend time with my dad. Um, and then Mr. Wong became my second father. I learned everything I could from them, fell in love with the program. But being 24 and female in an agriculture position, I was very nervous with high school students, but the students are amazing. I fell in love, and I stayed. So I've been there for 14 years, and I got 20 more to go.
Any questions, um, for our honored guests today? Anyone have any questions besides praise and glory, but, uh, we are so proud of you, and thank you so much for all that you do for our community, and especially for our kids. Uh, you know, they just, and not to age ourselves, but Mr. Wong was there when we were there. So, so we know that, uh, he turns out good kids, so thank you very, very much.
If you guys are free on Saturday, our Fall Festival is at Lelehuah Pumpkin Patch, so-
And that's a fun one, it is.
It is, so it's our pumpkin patch, and then our whole career, uh, CTE department has booths, and there's 20 vendors, and the canned food that is donated will be delivered to our elementary school students to give to them, and then if you do the dollar, it's gonna go to a scholarship fund for our CTE students. So everything stays in the Wahihua community. We did grow, I, I did have to order a few, because I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to do the 500 I usually do. I was only able to do about 250 this year.
You, you grew 500 pumpkins?
Is what I usually do, yeah.
Are you s, wow!
But I wanted to get corn in for Thanksgiving, so I did corn instead of all pumpkins.
Amazing. Oh, we have a question.
Quick question.
Yes.
Um, for a lot of parents here too, what's the future for our students being in the agriculture technology career field, because it's something new, and you're putting Wahihua on the map. Give her a hand, because Wahihua is known to be the highest in Ag tech.
Yeah, Ag tech is very, very big right now, and I try my hardest to, anything new, I try to incorporate into our curriculum, just so the students can get a taste of it. So right now, we have FarmBots, which is a robot that is able, the students do coding, and they're able to, um, weed, water, plants, everything, so all they have to do is harvest, and they can do everything from their phone. But I do wanna make sure that they understand where farming actually came from. So I do do at least three acres of traditional farming, organic farming, but they do know that we do have drones, we do have hydroponics, we do have FarmBots, we do have vertical towers, um, a lot of coding desktops. So as technology grows, I try to at least enforce that, so at least they see where it can go, and they don't have to think of pineapple fields, right? You know, as, when you think of farming, they can see where it comes from, and giving them a wide variety of different produce that comes out, that's, that's my main goal, at least giving them a taste to see what they can do. And then with that value-added center right there, I'm hoping that my students will be able to go there, get some college credits, as well as work in the center.
Yeah.
That's our next plan for next year.
And I can tell you, uh, every, almost every meeting that we met with Leeward- And I can tell you, every, almost every meeting that we met with V word, we've always said from the get-go, you've got to involve the Lelehua kids. We've said that from day one, and I know Chancellor Carlos is there, and I know he knows that. I kept bringing that, make sure you involve.
Yeah, so our students are, we're working with them now to figure out a curriculum to get our students certified to work at that, to be a part of that value-added center.
Perfect. This is why we have the 2024 Teacher of the Year. Again, everyone, before, I don't want to keep you standing, but, but we are going to, in honor of our Lelehua blood, we are gonna sing to you the Alma Mater, okay? Everybody, everybody, you know, that's our tradition. Everybody stand to honor you.
Oh, man. Oh, thank you, thank you. Ready, one, two, three. To Lelehua. Alma Mater dear. Sing the joyful chorus, sounded far and near.
Round and round for banner. We will never fail. Lelehua Alma Mater, hail, hail, hail.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we got it. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Chair, if I can just add something?
Yes.
Oh, before she leaves. The proposed new library building will have a floor level of classrooms from the community college. And we're trying to get those aimed at agricultural development and technology.
That's terrific. Yeah, very good. Thank you. Me, I might have you repeat that later on in the meeting. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, everyone, thank you for your participation and for welcoming and celebrating Jackie Frazier on her terrific Hawaii State Teacher of the Year award. Well done. Moving on to item five on the monthly reports, we have our federal military joining us. I'm not sure if Congresswoman's office, Congressman Takuta's office is on? No? Okay, then, then we are moving on to our Army.
Aloha and good evening, everyone. I'm Captain Molly Lebowski. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of serving as your US Army representative for the past about nine months. My time here on island is coming to a close, and so I'd like to introduce my replacement, Captain Blake Cox. You are in very good hands. He is way smarter than I am and much better on the mic than I am, but just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you so much for your warmth, for your aloha, and allowing me to be a representative.
But Molly, you're gonna hang around for a few minutes, right?
Nowhere else I'd rather be.
Okay, right, oh, there's another award. No, just kidding.
I could even, one, I'm Captain Blake Cox. I'm a member of Third Brigade, representing you guys, and I don't know if I'm smarter than Molly, it's a really strong compliment, but I do have to say, and something that she didn't mention, it's a true honor to be a representative of the community. Very few soldiers within the military get this opportunity, so I want to highlight, it is an incredible honor. So I'm excited to be here and work with you guys through my tenure here. So to get started, wanted to address a overgrowth concern from one of our previous months. A work order has been put in, and right now, where it's currently at, there is a tree specialist who's evaluating the dead trees within the area. And more to follow on that. I know it's at a high priority right now, but don't have an exact time when they're gonna come out to do that. To talk about job fair, so our next hiring fair is November 28th at the Honolulu Airport. It's gonna begin at 8:30 AM, and it's gonna end at 2 PM, so please come out. It's open to the public. And then any advanced applicants, they can go to www.himwr.com. That's Hotel India Mike Whiskey Romeo dot com. So come on out and see what available employment opportunities are available. So want to discuss probably the biggest thing going on with Third Brigade as well as our division. So this month happens every single year. It's an annual event. It's JPMRC, which stands for Joint Pacific Multinational Readiness Center. And so in summary, what that is, it's, well, the multinational piece kind of explains it. We have a lot of partner militaries coming on the island. And think of it as a Super Bowl for the US military. All year long, from our smaller units to our larger units, they've been working hard and training in the field, preparing for something that hopefully never comes one day, which is combat, and to best protect themselves, the person to the left and the right, and of course, the American people. And so JPMRC is that culminating exercise. We have militaries coming in, and it's a test to see everything they've done this week, or excuse me, this year, that they can expand on, and like where they, where they face. There's advisors. And of course, it's always a complex situation working with other militaries. So with that, it's starting on November 1st, and it's going to November 10th. The week prior, there's gonna be a lot of additional military movement along the roads. There's gonna be more aviation assets, more drones, every training area within the island of Oahu to include some areas out in PTA, the Big Island, are gonna be utilized during these, this week, week and a half of exercises. So we're doing the best we can and keeping every community up to date, and obviously, you guys at the forefront of how we mitigate that noise as much as possible, but be wary, it is hard to execute such a large exercise and not make a little bit of noise. So if you do hear some helicopters or increased noise, please understand what we're doing and why it's important to our strategic interests in having a prepared military. And, and work with us. But we're also here, of course, to receive any noise complaints or anything along those lines. So now that I hit, hit that, I wanted to end on a good note and share some good news stories. So it happened in August. We had some of our Comet Aviation Brigade flight crews really help assist with the massive fire here in Wahihua, which I'm sure you guys remember. Feels like a long time ago, but it, you know, feels like yesterday for how we were involved. So thank you to the Honolulu Fire Department, and then, of course, our aviation assets and the hard crews involved with that, some long hours there. And the last thing I want to highlight is just, we have some soldiers working with the Helamano Elementary, working with their Physical Fitness Fridays, which is a delight to students to do some physical fitness with US Army representatives, as you can imagine. And then, of course, it gives the teachers a little extra breather. So it's been, it's been great. But in closing, that's, that's all I have. Once again, thank you for letting me be a part of the community, representing you guys, and I'll be followed by any questions.
I have a question. Thank you very much for your service and just for, you know, how the Army handles being here in Hawaii and stewarding the land. A few weeks ago, we had a lockdown, which was, I was fortunate enough to be involved in that, and not good when you have to go to the bathroom, but I handled it well. So thank you. The organization, I felt really safe. My daughter was at a school, the schools were locked down, and, you know, it just, it went really well, and so thank you. Schofield handled that really well. My concern is traffic mitigation at McNair Gate, going into Schofield from, I think it's Wilakina. And in the early morning hours, it is a mess sometimes. I'm talking between 6:00 and 6:30. You have one lane going in, and people are going up when they should be coming out. I don't know if it's a personnel issue where you don't have enough guards. But it really is, is this something that we can look into? Is this, this has been happening more and more now that school knows back in session full on, and is it something to do with not having enough people or not getting the cones out of the way by 6:30 like they used to do? Yeah, it's a real mess, and it's dangerous, very dangerous.
Yes, ma'am. So thank you very much. That is a very good question. And someone who drives in the post every morning, I can definitely see how some days' traffic is better than others. And, you know, I'm not prepared to answer why that is, and some days is worse than others. That is a good question. I'm gonna follow up with and see like, what is the issue, and how can we better get after that so it is not dangerous to the public? So thank you for your question.
Hey, Sylvia, I know they, they do mess with kind of the contra flow of that of understanding there's a lot more soldiers going in than out, so they've definitely tried a few traffic patterns over the years that I've been here. But this is absolutely a comment that we'll bring back and we'll, we'll report up to the MP commander as something to take into consideration that whatever they're doing right now may not be necessarily working.
Yeah, because there, people aren't even following the lights. They're just going as soon as it's free to go from, coming from Waileua, from Wahihua. They're just going whenever they can, and it really is scary. It's kind of dangerous. Thank you.
And you said between the hours of 6:30?
Well, yeah, between 6:00 and 6:30. I know construction workers go on, because there's big, people with big trucks that go in. I know buses go in with the kids as well. But I've noticed it between 6:00 and 6:30. It's really bad. And usually around 6:30, they put up the cones so that we have more lanes going in than coming out. And, and then you can turn over by the school, or you can go straight over by the field and the other housing area. But sometimes it's just not enough people out there to help usher the people onto the post.
Understandable. We'll take this, this comment back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
First of all, Captain, I assume there'll be some live fire in this exercise in November?
No, sir. So no live fire. It's gonna be a blank, but there will be some explosive simulations, but no actual live fire for.
And is there a time of day that they're not going to do it, like 11 o'clock at night or midnight, or?
So once the first, the 10th through that period, it's 24, 24-hour op, so it's got some increased flight patterns, noises, simulations in the day, in the night, it's gonna be all throughout.
Gee, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Fred, you've got big shoes to fill. Captain Lebowski is very, very well-known in the community, very visible too.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I've been putting her shoes on, and I keep slipping out, so I'm trying to get some bigger feet.
At least they're not heels.
June, June had a question. June?
Hello. First question concerning this concerns Drum Road, actually, and I've asked this question over years, actually, and I know it got washed out. And I guess right now, it may be emphasized that not having that repaired where the tactical vehicles could use Drum Road is, would, would impact this exercise, I would assume. And just wanted to know, I, I don't know if you're, you are aware of the, the problem of Drum Road being washed out and was never repaired, but and then, and that's a concern to North Shore community, I heard too, because they would like to use Drum Road as an emergency exit from the North Shore as an alternative. Because if you only got two roads coming up, and a third one in an emergency would be greatly helpful. If you require maybe some congressional help, maybe we can get our congressional people involved in having that repaired. Because it was originally repaired because of the Striker Brigade coming to 25th Division. And I don't believe that the need has gone away for it. Because when I was in the National Guard, I remember going up Drum Road, and that was horrible. The, the road condition, you know, and you would come down very steep, and you would have deep gullies right in the middle of the road. So I don't think it's, has improved since then, but and so.
So June, the question is, is the usage or availability of Drum Road?
Right. And, and the repair of it. I, I don't believe it has been completely repaired. I don't know, probably funding is the issue.
Is that something that could be looked into?
Yeah, and then it probably, at this point, it probably will take maybe an effort of the congressional delegation to assist with getting some funds to have it repaired. And then another thing, the traffic outside of Schofield, that's not just an Army issue. That, that has, we have to involve the Department of Transportation. Because technically, outside of the base is the state, state roads. It's not. It's not the Army's roads per se. They can only do what they can do on base, but they don't have a say of what, what happens outside right now.
Yes, sir. I remember you talking, addressing the Drum Road issue back when we were still having meetings out at Whitmore Village. I believe the last, the last update I gave you was that it was being worked on, but I have not followed it up since then. So allow me to follow that, and then I will give you a direct update.
And then the third one. I don't, I sent you an email concerning.
Yes, sir, about the Lions Day in November.
Yeah, for those of you that don't know, she's being honored at our next general meeting on the 15th of November, so that's after the parade. Hopefully, your schedule dies down a little.
I know that this guy's here wide open. But absolutely, it is my honor to attend that. So thank you.
So yeah, and she's not the only one. We have other, the, what was the Kumuhula name that we're honoring also at the Lions? Yeah, she's, she has the Kekihulas. So.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you, June. Any other questions from the board for our military? Virtually, any questions virtually for our military? Oh, we have. Hi, Lina. Hi, Lina.
Hi, I, I just wanted to let you know that according to what that gentleman was just talking about, the Drum Road repairing and maintaining it. He is correct. The North Shore is very much looking forward to some kind of movement with that, because you know, we only have the Maia Maia Highway. And if they, if for any reason, the population out this side needs to get off the North Shore due to whatever natural disaster or even a fire disaster, it would be a great road to be used. So, and I think he's also right in letting our congressional delegation know our concerns and possibly put it on their agenda so they can start, you know, having that conversation of garnering funds to make that, make that repair. So if you guys can continue that conversation and let this neighborhood board know, as well as a North Shore Neighborhood Board know, what progress has been made or can be made. But it is something that should be in everyone's thoughts. As we all know, the weather gets really crazy nowadays, and you know, we, we need to think about our safety, the safety of our communities. Thank you, Captain.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for the question, and clearly, there's some historical presence with this question, and now being on board, I'm gonna do my best to hunt it down. And make sure I get after it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lina. And, and Captain, you know, as we move forward on this, if you folks start working on it, I'm sure June would like to be involved. It can be one of our committees. And then we can always reach out to the congressional delegation for assistance at a certain point, as well as the state DOT, because they are, they do come out to our neighborhood board meetings as well. So I know it's not all gonna happen at once, but as, as we progress, we can always reach out for, you know, support and, and assistance too. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions from the community? Okay, I think we're good.
I will say in closing, we're here with our Public Affairs Officer, and he's printed off some fat sheets of JPMRC, so it can go in a little bit more detail of what I went into, as well as immediate advisory. So please pick those up as you're picking up the Honolulu Fire Department stickers, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure.
And, and Captain, Captain, can you come up, Molly? And we just wanna, we're not, not all of us, we may not see you again, I guess, for a little bit, because you'll be on other assignments, so. I was gonna say, don't, don't worry, we're not gonna sing the Alma Mater.
I don't know if I could sing the Lelehua song.
But we do, we do want to give you a round of applause, because you have been a tremendous asset to this board, and you have bared with us on many, many issues, and you've returned all our calls, and, you know, and it's been a definite pleasure and honor to work with you. So everyone, if we can give a big mahalo. And I have your phone number, so.
Anytime.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, everyone, we are now in the, in the. Okay, everyone, we are now on the, in the section of, I mean, we're now in the, we're not Navy. We don't have a Navy representative, so, Section B, I'm sorry, Section B. Uh, no report from DOT and Board of Water Supply. We have two things happening. We're going to get an update from our Board of Water Supply representative, Nicole Kid Rodman. And then following that will be the presentation on the Board of Water Supply's proposed five-year water rate schedule. Okay, thank you. No report.
Aloha, Chair, Board, residents, and guests, Nicole Rodwell from the Board of Water Supply. Um, so I'll make my announcements quick so we can move on to Kathleen for our presentation. Um, so since we didn't really meet last month, we had five water main breaks in the Waihewa area in the months of August and September. So in October, uh, sorry, August eighteenth, we had an eight-inch cast iron water main installed in nineteen twenty, broke at twelve fifty of I Drive. And on September fifth and sixth, an eight-inch cast iron water main installed in nineteen fifty-three, broke at eight twenty Neil Avenue. On September twentieth, a six-inch cast iron water main installed in nineteen twenty, broke at one seventy Makawayo Avenue. And finally, on September twenty-fifth, a six-inch cast iron water main installed in nineteen fifty-three, broke at nine thirty-seven Peach Street. We would like to invite the community on behalf of Board of Watch, Board of Water Supply and our partners to this year's Imagine a Day Without Water event. It's going to be held this Saturday at the Freshwater State Recreation Area here in Waihewa. Um, it's going to be from ten AM to two PM. Uh, we will have more than fifteen city, state, and community organization booths with with interactive activities, such as rain barrel and native seed workshops, serious cape plant crafts, freshwater fishing. Um, licenses are required. We will be making ginkerballs, um plenty of games, food, and small prizes. I mean, just want to invite everybody to come out and learn about the importance of One Water and the impacts of climate change today and in the future. So for more information on this, please go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/OneWaterHawaii. Um, if there are any questions or concerns, I'm happy to take those back or we have Kathleen here to answer questions.
Any questions from the board for the Board of Water Supply? Yes, go ahead, TJ.
Just real quick, do you have a flyer for this event? Because I do know that um there is a kupuna complex right there and I think they would enjoy coming to this and it's within a walking distance of where they are.
We had some here last week, but I can email you one directly.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, everyone.
Hi, Nicole, uh, thanks for being here. Um, I appreciate when I get the um Board of Water Supply bill is really informative. And then I actually took the time to like read like the gauge of my pipes and how much it was and then calculate like that the increase. On this flyer, it does mention something about forever chemicals and then kind of reading about it, the idea that like pretty much everything has forever chemicals in this. Like, is there a filtration system? I mean, it seems almost impossible to not use the things that it's mentioned that have forever chemicals. What can be done, I suppose?
I'm going to defer that question to Kathleen here. Miss Kathleen Pahinui.
Thank you, thank you, Nicole. Thank you, ma'am. What are the, we have detected PFOS in our about eight wells, um mostly in the Pearl City Waialua area, but at levels that are like parts per trillion. Uh, we're under what the proposed new EPA rule will be, which is two part, two parts per trillion for PFOA and PFOS, which are the two that have been heavily studied, studied and linked to cancer. So we're well underneath uh that. Uh, we've gone back and then we test them regularly after that and there's been no increases in it. There are water filters out there. Uh, if you go to the National Sanitation Foundation, nsf.org, they talk about various things you can do. I do not believe, however, there are any out water pitchers or anything out there that can filter at that minute level. Because it's so, it's, you know, we're talking about very, very, very small uh amounts.
So that very small amount could eventually one day lead to more amount amounts. So we're looking at like the natural filtration of the aquifer and it just, we're increasing the amount of use of this so that that is entering our water system.
Well, it's been around since the forties, actually.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's been around, it's pretty much in a lot of the products that we use every single day. If you use nonstick cookware, it's probably in that. Um, and so the EPA is upping their um surveillance and, but we've actually been testing. We knew this rule was coming down, so we've been testing for these chemicals well prior to the EPA and it looks like the rule will be finalized at some point, I think, if not this year, early part of next year.
Thank you, I appreciate your vigilance and.
No, no, thank you, we appreciate your question.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other questions from the board for BWS? Questions from the community virtually? No, virtually, and questions from the community? Anyone? Okay. Oh, hold on, go ahead, Joe.
Sorry, the rate increases, they're already.
That's what I'm coming up next.
Thank you.
It's on the agenda.
And having said that, we will move to our next item on the agenda, which is the presentation for, on the BWS proposed five-year water rate schedule. Kathleen Pahinui, Public Affairs.
Thank you, Stephen. I want to introduce Stephen Norstrom, who works in my department as a communication specialist and he will be running the thing. So I will tell you right now, yes, we are increasing your water rates strictly, your water. We're not talking about sewer here. Next slide, please. Uh, everyone knows we have a large, complex system. Uh, we have one of the largest systems for a city our size. We're actually larger than some mainland cities. Next slide, please. We are completely semi-autonomous, which means we do not get any money from the city. We do not get property tax money. We're funded by rate payer and then we also do things like bonds and some loans and things like that as well. These rates only apply to water, they do not apply to sewer. Sewers handled by the Department of Environmental Services. Next slide. This is where your money goes, um, because people ask and you have a right. We're a government agency and you have every right to know where your money goes. Most of it goes towards operations, a good third. Another about third goes to labor. Anyone who runs a business knows that labor is a, usually a very large cost of any operation. And then electricity was fairly large and then we have other things such as debt service that has to go to our loans and bonds. Next slide, please. When we had our, we do our five, our rate increases in five-year increments. And so when we did this the last time, this is the amount of money that we raised. This is where it went. We did almost five hundred projects, about two hundred in planning, design, and another three hundred are in the construction phase. Next slide. Unfortunately, like everybody, we had three things that really kind of knocked us off our five-year plan. Uh, for those of you who aren't aware, we actually did a thirty-year master plan, which we're getting into the process of updating based on some of these factors you will see here tonight. COVID, a lot of the businesses closed down, they weren't serving, and the bulk, they pay the highest rate. They pay a hundred and seventeen percent of their cost of service. So if people aren't using water, we don't get money. And so that did um affect us. Next slide, please. Electric inflation, like everybody, our ability to purchase dropped considerably during the height. It was up about twenty-one percent and we only did rate increases for about thirteen percent. So there was this big gap about what we budgeted for and what we actually took in. Next slide. And like everybody else, our electric bill went up. Last year, our electric bill was thirty-three million dollars. Uh, and that's with full of Vataic. We have full of Vataic on most of our facilities. Come down to our mainland, our main facility on Beritania, you'll see a beautiful array. All of our staff now has covered parking, but it didn't matter. As you can see, total kilowatts went down, but monthly costs and other things still kept going up. And we all saw it in our own. So we ended up five point five million dollars over budget to nothing. And there's nothing we can do about it. We need to have water, electricity to operate the system. Next slide, please. Red Hill, no surprise there. Red Hill, we are going to be going and we have been uh putting things together. We're keeping all of our options open to get reimbursed. We're not shutting the doors. Uh, I can't tell you yet how much that number is going to be, but it's not going to be a small number. But in the meantime, we still have a system we have to operate. We have some more monitoring wells we need to put in so we can reassure our customers that the contamination isn't spreading. And we need to find some new uh water sources, especially in the Aia Haalava area, because they lost fifty percent of their water source when the um Red Hill catastrophe happened nearly two years ago. And today, we stand here defueling and very grateful for that, taking that um negative impact off of our water system. But again, unfortunately, we still need to move forward. We still have an operating system, but we are not going to not do anything about it. You can rest assured, my boss is going to be very aggressive and going after it and you won't be hearing more about that later, I'm sure. Next slide. We have tightened our belt uh since twenty seventeen, prior to all of this starting. You know, when you budget, you make your budget and then as your costs come in, you see hopefully if you budgeted well, your costs will match or come close to your budget, under, not over. Uh, for many years, we weren't coming very close to our budget, we were well under. So we knew we weren't doing a very good job of telling people what we thought we were going to spend and how much money. So Ernie challenged us and we've been tightening, you know, and budgeting much better, you know, like we do all do with our home budgets. The other thing that happened when COVID hit, he went back to us and said, okay, guys, cut fifteen percent. And when we saw things were going to get worse, he had us come back and cut another top ten percent. So we haven't been sitting idle just figuring out, oh, well, we'll figure it out. We have been tightening our belt. Our twenty fiscal year twenty-four budget is only point two percent over our fiscal twenty-three budget. So we're very tight and we're running very lean. It means we parked some projects. We have, luckily, you guys haven't been affected. We have lots of projects going on in your community to replace bright pipes so we don't get main breaks. Uh, but those had been planned a while ago. But anything new, we're being very careful about how we're um looking at and assigning priority. Next slide, please. So we have to strike this balance between serving our community with safe water and making sure that you guys can still afford to pay your water bill. Next slide, please. Uh, this is what we plan to do with the increase. The brown, the big brown band at the top is pipelines. We had to cut back on our pipeline replacement. For those of you may remember, when we did a presentation on the water master plan a few years ago, we wanted to replace twenty-one miles of pipe per year. That obviously didn't happen. We were getting really close and then COVID and then we had to reprioritize, especially after Red Hill. We're also looking at water resources. That's that red, yellow, big yellow block in there. So this just kind of gives you an idea of where we're going to be funneling the money. Next slide. Most of our customer base is single-family residents. They make up about twenty-five percent, they use about thirty-four percent, thirty-five percent of the water. Single-family residents, we do what we call a cost of service study to see how, who's paying what and if we're covering our costs. They only pay ninety-five percent. And so it costs us five percent more than it does to deliver the water to a single-family home. Uh, when we did this five years ago, uh, single-family was paying even less than that. We had to bring them up in terms of being fair because multifamily were actually paying a hundred and seven percent of the cost of service. So we dropped them down to a hundred percent immediately because we realized that wasn't fair and then kept, brought single-family up just as, just a couple percentage points. Uh, agricultural is very small, less than one percent of our customer base, but uh we do subsidize. It is a value, community value, we know that's very dear, near and dear to this community. So we're still going to keep their water rates at sixty percent of cost of service. Now, non-residential, I mentioned earlier, when the businesses weren't busy, they pay a hundred and seventeen percent of the cost to deliver water. And we do that, that's part of that is because they subsidize ag, they subsidize potable, they subsidize the single family. So that's just kind of where we're at and we didn't lower them this time around. We were going to try to lower them a bit, but given the fact of where we are, if we had tried to raise single-family to its true cost of service, it would not have worked. It was, we ran, we run a lot of scenarios. We run, we ran like thirty different scenarios, tweaking just little parameters here and there to ensure that we were coming up with the best plan that we could, that would get us money and not break people's pocketbooks, to be honest with you. Next slide, please. So this is what we're looking at in terms of overall percentages over the next five years. And I, this has not been approved. This are, still has to go before our Board of Directors. We will be having a board meeting next Monday where we're going to lay out. We've been talking to them and presenting to them the last several months. We held uh several communities, held four community meetings. We've been going to a lot of neighborhood boards and talking to people. And then we've also done some other community meetings. But we're looking at ten percent, ten percent, nine, eight and a half, eight and eight. So I have to be honest with you, that's a total of sixty-six percent over the next five years. Just letting you know, just being completely transparent. Next slide, please. But we are not, not all things are equal because single-family, agriculture, and multi-unit are what we had called a tiered rate system. It's not a flat rate. Next slide, please. So that means that if you only use two thousand gallons a month in your water, and a lot of people do, ten percent of our customer base only uses ten percent of two thousand gallons a month, you, you will see a small and only a two and a half percentage increase in that tier. What we did is we pushed most of the increase in that third tier. Three percent of people on this island actually use more than thirty thousand gallons a month, which is crazy. And we are, we have an active program reaching out to those people. And I won't tell you where they live, but I'm sure you can imagine. It's not Waihewa. Next slide, please. So we have, still have our essential needs and that's, I just mentioned, that the increase will only be limited to about two and a half percent. And uh if you could go to the next slide, please. As you can see, then the highest tier will see this, the largest increase in water usage. Next slide, please. So this is what the rates will look like. We try, you know, we put them out there just so you can see what the monthly will be. And remember, everybody pays a certain tier rate for two thousand. Then the next tier comes up and then you pay that next level. So it kind of multiplies on top of each other, it's not just a straight. So if you use six thousand gallons a month, you do, your first two thousand are at the lower rate and then your next four thousand are at the next rate at tier two. Next slide, please. And this is just how to calculate, next slide. And this is what you could expect your monthly bill. And our, we also have a customer charge that's based on meter size. Most single-family are three quarters or five eighths and they pay the least amount. We changed this five years ago because we realized large customers weren't paying their fair share. A big meter, and we have meters that are just huge, uh, require a lot more to service them. So we wanted people to begin pay what it costs for the, us to service them. So I'm going to stop here. You have the handout, there's more over here if you didn't get one that shows you what your average bill might be. So for example, a two thousand person's bill will, will go up, but not significantly, about a couple of dollars, two, three dollars over the next five years. So I know that's not, for some people, that's a lot of money. I know three dollars for me is a lot of money. Uh, but we tried really hard to do our best. So that's why we do both percentages and then show you what an average bill might look like so you have a better idea, a better feel for it. So I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Kathleen, for the presentation and Steve for being here. Thank you. Um, questions from the board?
Hey, Kathleen? This hasn't gone to, this hasn't gone to your directors yet, but yeah. This, this hasn't gone to your directors yet and hasn't gone to PWC?
They will make their final decision, I believe, in November.
Okay.
We did mail this out to our hundred and seventy thousand customers. And I got a hundred comments so far. Most of them don't want the increase, of course, and I will be responding to every single comment because that's just what we do. Um, and, but when we held our public hearings and going to the neighborhood boards, for the most part, um, most people say, okay, we understand why you need it and why you have to do what you do. But that, I do encourage you guys to send in if you have comments on the back. You'll see we have a email specifically for uh comments for the increase. But we expect the board will make a decision at the November meeting and that the first rate increase will go into effect February.
So I, one, just one recommendation, uh, don't, don't refer to it as a sixty-six percent increase.
I, I believe in being trans. I believe in being transparent, and I've had people sit in the audience and then raise their hand and say, well, you're charging. So people will do the math, so I might as well just get it out there. There's no point in hiding.
Honesty is always the best policy.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
Is there plans for another desalination plant?
Yes, there is. We're actually, I started it, it's going to be at Campbell Industrial, actually Kalailoa at the very end of Kalailoa Boulevard. It's near Campbell. What we're trying to do is to get Campbell Industrial, the business is there, that use water for their, whatever they're using for, for refining purposes, off potable water. And we're starting at 1.7 million gallons per day, but it is scalable up to 5 million gallons per day. But it's not a cheap process. We will be putting in a solar array, but it does, it's very electrical intensive. But it, we also, there's also concerns about environmental issues that we want to make sure that we're addressing, because it's over the cap rock, which is a dense marine sediment in the no pass, it's outside of the no pass zone. So we're not worried about it affecting the aquifer, but we still don't want to affect the near-marine environment either. But if it works, and we're able to make it work, then we can scale it up, and then we can also start looking at other areas, perhaps, that we might want to do this. We're also looking at more recycled water. I think we're looking over in the Waianaealo area, putting in, perhaps, doing something over there. But we have to work with E and V on that. It has to be co-located for, to make, for it to make sense. But we do want to do more recycled water as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead, Erin.
I think in one of your brochures, I read, and I was kind of shocked, that the households, the usage is highest because of your toilet, like it uses the most amount of potable water. Is there any homes that have a different system, where you're not, we're using R1 water? I don't know, you know, different system?
Well, there is gray water. DOH has approved rules for the use of gray water, and that would be things like out of your laundry. And you probably have seen, I know they're popular in Japan, but they also are popular in tiny homes, where the sink over the toilet bowl, not over the bowl, over the tank. And then the water you use to wash your hands goes into the tank, and then you use that to flush your toilet. So we're completely in support of that. Whatever we can do to support it, we think it's a great idea. We've been working with DOH for a number of years to try and get that moving along, because you're right, anything that we can do, so we're not wasting potable water. Now, we also have a new toilet rebate, which was very popular for those who remember from the 1990s, the low-flush toilets. That's 1.28 gallons of flush. The other thing, and Barry always likes to mention this, is when it's yellow, it's mellow, and I'll leave it at that.
Just to add on, I read this somewhere, but I actually put a brick inside of my-
That's another, yes, yeah, that's another great idea, a brick.
Put a brick inside the tank, so that it takes less to fill up the tank, and it still has a heavy-duty flush.
Yeah, you should. We have a lot of good conservation ideas on our website. We also have a very robust rebate program that we have going on now, for clothes washers, irrigation controllers, lots of different things, both commercial and residential. So I invite you to visit our website for that. And if you have any other ideas, let us know, because we're, we're always promoting. Stephen is my conservation expert, so.
Any other questions from the board members? Questions from virtually, anyone virtual have any questions to ask Board of Water Seeing none in the community, any questions for Board of Water Supply?
Oh, sir.
They can't, the virtual one, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I just want to say, I appreciate your being so upfront, and I find your boss, Mr. Lau, the same.
That's very true. Okay, I think we're all good on this. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate everyone being here from Board of Water Supply. Thank you. Okay, right now, then we're moving into our next section, which is Section 6, Residents' Concerns and Any Community Announcements. Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
I've been asked to announce about the Wahiwa Town Santa Parade, and it's going to be Friday, December 1st, starting at Ka'ala Elementary, 130 California Avenue. And lineup starts at 5:00 PM, and the parade starts at 6:30, traveling up California Avenue, then turning left and ending on North Kane Street.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other community announcements? Yes, and if you can introduce yourself as well?
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Leah Thorne, and I'm here to introduce myself and my, and my company. I started Aloha State Outreach. And what I'm doing is, is I'm a community health worker. I graduated from Kapiolani Community College. I did take their accreditation course, and I'm bringing my professional services here. We have been servicing our seniors, our kupuna over at Silvercrest, as well as La'ola, once a month, providing activities, free educational workshops, whatever they need, we're filling that need, however we can. The focus of Aloha State Outreach is, of course, to provide support services for our homeless people. Previously, I come from HMSA. I just left HMSA as their premier community health worker. I left them in March. Before that, I worked at Wa'ne'ko's Community. I was doing their beach outreach, so I do have an extensive history and experience in the area. I am working with Partners in Care right now to complete my credentials, and able to access and enter live data into the HMIS database and get these individuals housed. So I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. This is my husband, Mitchell. We've been living in Wahiwa. We got planted here about three years ago. We come from homelessness. We were homeless during COVID. So very resilient, very resourceful, and I just wanted to say hi. I'm making my rounds. I'll be attending all of the board meetings, because we need help here. We need help. You guys need a CHW in this community, and we're here. So Aloha State Outreach, we're so new. I ran out of business cards. I did, I did outreach today in the community. We got more on order, but you will find, you will see us, we're out in the communities, pounding those streets.
Okay. Leah, nice to meet you. And again, your husband is?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, nice to meet you. So both of you were partnered to walk around and meet?
Yes, we were, we were actually out at Lake Wilson today. We went to go visit House of Blessings today, yesterday, or this week earlier, we serviced the seniors. So we're building those relationships, because community health workers are all about those relationships, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the work that you're doing, but we also, oh, do you have a website? We got a question.
alohastateoutreach.org. We are 501(c)(3) pending. We are in the final stages of that application, just waiting any day now, and just going out there and pounding that pavement. We're getting, we gotta get our people ready for this, for the rainy season coming up. I'm not going to make any promises, other than I'm going out there, and I'm pretty aggressive. But thank you.
But with Aloha, I'm sure, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much for introducing yourselves and helping our community.
Thank you.
And definitely, in the future, as you, as you build your, your, your operation, you know, we definitely would like you to come and do a presentation to us.
Absolutely. So just to let you folks know, we are partnering with multi-agencies. If we can, if we're going on site, and we're assessing that individuals need to be seen medically, we are absolutely endorsing that individual to go to ER. The way that I conduct my outreach is, I have both a mental health provider, as well as a medical provider, so that if there is a need any which way, we will see that all the way through. So we do absolutely provide wraparound services, even though I'm working out of my house right now. But we're here, so yes.
Thank you, Leah, thank you. And you might want to hang around a little bit, because we have, we probably get some reports from our-
Absolutely, yes. But thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Both of you. Any other announcements, or, yes, please come, and if you can introduce yourself.
Aloha, Wahiwa Board, Wahiwa Community. Some people know me, some people don't. My name is Derek Consalva. I am with the Rotary Wahiwa, Wai'lu'a. I'm also with Wedge, with More Economic Development Group. I'm also with the Leirik Community College Culinary Advisory Board. And I'm so involved with Wahiwa right now. I mean, I've got some projects coming up. The newest one is going to be on Veterans Day Parade. We are having a Wahiwa kukua for Maui. So we're raising funds, and hopefully, the Wahiwa community can join us in, you know, providing financial help for Maui. We do have a slate of entertainment. We're going to have Kapena, we're going to have Melvin Lee, we're going to have Crush, remember them? And we're, we're going to have Summer. And Kimo is going to be our emcee. So we're going to have a lot of crafters, food trucks, and food vendors. So come out and join us at the end of the Veterans Day Parade. I'm also involved with the Pineapple Festival. I actually instigated the Pineapple Festival for this year. We brought in over 2,000 people. And, you know, I got the permission from Senator Donovan de la Cruz to start it up, because it was in hiatus for about five years, I guess. So, you know, that was a festival that Wahiwa was proud of. So I wanted to bring it back. And with the help of Green Mancho, we got together, we got the nonprofit groups in Wahiwa, business people in Wahiwa, we got everybody together. So, you know, we're going to go do it again this year. It's going to be on April 27th. So mark your calendars, the Pineapple Festival will be on again. And I thank you so much for Green Mancho from Wahiwa to start all this up again.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, Derek, before you walk off, so April 27th is the Pineapple Festival?
Yes.
That's for next year?
Yeah.
But did you give a date for the, for the kukua for Maui?
Yeah, that's going to be on November 11th.
November 11th.
Right after the Veterans Day Parade. And it's going to be at Ka'ala Elementary.
Very good.
And then the Pineapple Festival is at Ka'ala Elementary.
Correct, got it.
So we love Ka'ala Elementary.
Very good. Thank you very much for your announcements. Very good.
Yeah, any questions?
No, I think you're good.
Okay, all good.
Thank you, thank you for the announcement. Any other, oh, go ahead.
Yes, you. You didn't mention the, the cost to enter the festival.
Yeah, I mean, we're raising money for Maui, and this is the whole purpose. The entry fee is $5. Okay, so, and what's going to happen is that we're going to ban everybody with a pink band. So if anybody tried to jump the fence, we know, kick them out. But, yeah, we'll be real nice about it. But yeah, we're, we're looking for, you know, a big donation from Wahiwa. We are also going to try to be on Channel 2 News, bring this up. Nikki Finchell is going to be doing that for us. We're trying to get it, get together with her tomorrow morning and do an announcement. The other thing, too, is that I want to thank Molly. Molly, she was on our board for the Pineapple Festival, and Mr. Blake is our new guy that's on our Wahiwa kukua for Maui. So thank you for those guys. And Jackie Fraser, she's, she mentioned about that pineapple, the pumpkin festival. Yeah, I met her that day, it was almost a year ago. So, yep, and then, yeah, so Leirik Community College is going to have the added value.
Yes.
So.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. Any other community announcements? Oh, go ahead, Leah.
It's not an announcement, but just concern. When I tried to, you call it Google, but on my computer, it's called Bing, trying to get the neighborhood board minutes, I had problems and issues with it. It's always difficult to find the site and everything else, but also, too, the minute, the agenda was so tiny, I really needed a magnifying glass to read it. So if it could be put into a format that you could read it. And I also tried to Google the kind of activities for Parks and Recreation that Wahiwa had. And they did it by region, and it's all mixed up. I couldn't just click onto Wahiwa and get all the events there. You had to kind of scroll, and scroll, and scroll. So getting older, it's harder to maneuver these websites. So can the city, please have someone older reviewing it before they send it out to the public? Thank you.
Thank you, Leah, for that, for those comments. And I do agree with you that the, the font is much smaller right now. Yes, come, Leah.
From last, from the last time, I did have a question. I can't shriek. Hey, I'm an elder, okay? From the last meeting, we didn't have, I had a question regarding Hawaiian is the second language in the state. I don't see it being utilized, and what's sad is voting. When they sent the memos out, the letters, there is no Hawaiian. It should have been the second line. It's not. And I see in the stores, they have English, and they have other language. There is no Hawaiian. I need to bring back, I really think the state needs to recognize Hawaiian, since they say that we can use it, and we do, they need to bring that, make it a point. And my second one was, I, I am the POA for my mother, who's a senior citizen, she's 91 years old, and I seem to be having problems with the case managements and the caregivers. And I just needed people to know that I would just switch my mother if I didn't like it, or I saw something going on, or a little bit of abuse. And I was just recently told by the ombudsman, John McDermott, that you need to complain, because they don't know that, what people are doing. So he told me that he has a radio program in different languages, so that people like me will hear what's going on in, for the elder, and Wahiwa is an elder community. So he has a program on 1280 AM, KINE, radio station, between 12:30 to 17:30. And he can give information, and it's in all languages. It will come out for people in different languages. So just wanted people to be aware of that.
So he's the ombudsman for the state?
He's the ombudsman for the Executive Office on Aging, Long-Term Care, Ombudsman Program. So he said it's been here since 1975.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you, yeah, thank you.
AM.
AM, 1280, AM, KINE, 1230 to 1730.
Yes, hours.
Yeah.
1230 to 5:30.
5:30, yeah. Thank you, that's good information. Okay, last call, for any other announcements, before we move into our next section? Oh, hi.
My name is TC from Wahiwa, Whitmore, Whitmore resident. In the agenda, I didn't see any about the, the bridge that connect from Wahiwa to Whitmore. But I heard that the, the project's still alive, but nobody mentioned about when and how it's going to happen. I know, remember, two years ago, three years ago, we do talk about, about the bridge thing, and 99%, of people have rejected that project. I think this is a good time to put it to sleep, because we can get the money and give it to our brothers and sisters in Lahaina, to rebuild Lahaina. Because to me, you know, we can, Whitmore or Wahiwa people can sacrifice that bridge to, to give the money away, you know, rather than build that bridge that we, you, I don't know if you're using them, but I don't know about you, if you're using them or not, but this is just a, you know, people walk by, you know, we don't, do we need a bridge over here? I, I see, I can see a, a traffic, two-lane traffic bridge would be more beneficial for just a pedestrian bridge, you know what I'm talking about? If Camp Highway shut now, school field shut now, where are we going to go? We cannot go around. So to me, my personally wise, we'd rather have a two-lane car road that car can go around. I, you know, I would really love that, rather than have just a bridge for people that walk by, and car cannot go through. And will you, to me, you don't understand the, the traffic- And will you, to me, you don't understand the traffic. It's more heavier during the day, you know, something like that. If you go at nighttime, you see people say, oh, I'm going to walk to Whitmore or Waihau to Whitmore. There's nobody going to walk from Waihau to Whitmore. But Whitmore, what people walk from Waihau might be. But you look at nighttime at Whitmore, there's no place to park cars. There's no more people that walking nowadays. That's 20 years, 30 years ago, people, yeah, people walking. But nowadays, people don't walk anymore. People drive, you know what I mean? The old folks, especially they, the children will take them to shopping. So why we spending the 13, 14 million dollars that to build that bridge that can sit there, sitting there and look pretty? And then they're wasting the money, right? There's not, not 100% people can use it, only like maybe 1% or 2% or less. But the homeless going to use it. But, you know, I was talking about homeless. But that's how they, you know, they're going to use it for create problems. Because it's how they, not say they are bad, but it's how they had nothing to do. You know, we try, that's why we try to help her to get these homeless away. But having a bridge, to me, is kind of wasting our money and time to do that. But I wish whoever that listen to, you know, the De La Cruz people or the state people, anybody can take this message.
So actually, Sivute, thank you for being here. It's really good to see you. But we have Senator's office staff on, he's going to be talking soon. So I think he maybe.
Anyway, so that's what I'm concerned. But make sure you put an agenda so we can talk about this. Because it's part of our, our community thing. You know, you kind of hush, hush away, then suddenly the build.
Yeah, we had so many meetings on that, yeah. And you're right, it has been quiet. But David's on, so I'm sure he heard your concerns and we'll go from there, yeah? Thank you very much. Any other comments before we go announcements, I should say, before we go into the next section? Okay, thank you, everyone, for the announcements. A lot of them are very good. So we're going to move into Section 7, our agenda. And very quickly, the rules of decorum for this presentation. All participants at this meeting shall extend the spirit of aloha to one another. There shall be no displays of disrespect to one another. Public comments can be made within the stated time limits and without interruption unless the comments are offensive and/or are out of order and are not conducive to civil discourse. We just have one presentation tonight and it's from our very popular and well-known community member, Rin Mancho from the Waihau Lions Club to talk about the 77th Waihau Lions Club Veterans Day Parade and the Kokua for Maui event. Irene.
Good evening and aloha, everyone. Nice to see you. I'm learning a lot catching up on all of your neighborhood board business. So for my presentation, I have good news. After the pandemic, the Veterans Day Parade has returned. We used to do it on virtually. We did it sign waving on the side of the highway. But last year and this year, we're back in person thanks to all the volunteers and the community. So I'm passing out two flyers. Lillette is going to pass out the flyer on the parade because we're here to invite you to sign up to walk in the parade, ride in the parade, but join the parade. And we're changing the direction. So in honor of my predecessors, the Lions Club, who are no longer with us, who used to run the parade, Henry Lee and Tina Bagasal, Mia Oyasato, I mean, Henry Oyasato, those gang, they ran the parade for 76 years. So here I am, it's the 77th year, and we're making history because we're changing the direction. We're going to try something different. We used to end up at the park and the attendance was really small. So now we're invited by Leighton Nakamoto. The principal said, come to my school, Kaala School. So Leighton said, you can do your parade from the park and then you can finish your parade at Kaala School and have the Veterans Festival to celebrate Veterans Day. So we took him up on it. But there was a lot of like, you sure you can do that? And everybody had to work together. And as Derek mentioned earlier, that the Pineapple Festival was so successful, the Pineapple Festival Committee planned the Kokua for Maui. Because we sat around saying, we want to do something. We need some help. It's every day we're crying, we're watching the news. We want to help Maui. And so they said, well, Shige Simon said, you guys going to be out at the parade? Why don't you just do it after the parade and celebrate? People can come out anyway. Let's bring the people out together. So in honor of the veterans for 77 years, we're changing the direction. You're going to meet at Waihau District Park at 9:00 in the morning. The parade starts at 10:00, comes down Kane Street, past down the shopping center, goes all the way down to the Soto Mission. Mahela Street, turn right. You can go home or you can go straight onto Kaala School for the festival. Or some of us will have their cars or buses parked there. It's, we're going to try something new. But so Veterans Day will just not be a parade this year. It's going to be a full-day festival. So it's veterans, it's active military, it's Gold Star families. And when you hear about the complaints from the neighbors about the noise of the military training, when it's quiet, they're away defending our country. When you hear them marching in cadence, that's the sound of freedom. Thanks to the military training, we want the sounds of freedom. That was a General Brooks in 1974 who came up with that term. So we use it now. So Waihau people, we love the sounds of freedom. So again, sign up. There's a, this paper has, where you can sign up to be in the parade. Which, and you can be, you can enjoy the parade. You'll know where to sit now because it's not going to end up at the shopping center. It's going to end down at the Soto Mission by Kaala School. Then there's another flyer for you to sign up for if you'd like to be part of the Waihau Kokua for Maui. We want crafters, we want food vendors. We're going to have game booths. So Ili'ahi School says, we want to have a game booth and we want to have kids to come in, enjoy and have fun. We'll have bouncers. We're going to have the best entertainment. So that's what we thought was going to be a small festival. But then when Mike Nakapu, we got Kapena. What? In Waihau? And, you know, and the Crush. Well, we've got Melvin Lee, we've got the sound of, what is that band's? Summer, they're so popular now, everybody's dancing. But the feeling was, we're going to just sit around and enjoy music. But then all of a sudden, we had activities. So it's a family day and let's all honor our veterans in style. Hopefully, next year, we can continue doing the parade going down. And they're welcome at Kaala School. But we need you to sign up. So you can sign up and you can buy your $5 tickets online or you can get, pay $5 when you come into the school for that day. But we really also want you to sign up to be in the parade. And all we know is Royal Hawaiian Band, the tradition, they're always leading the parade in the color guard. So does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, board members? Yes, go ahead, June.
I just want to make a comment to the audience. Please tell all your friends that it's going in reverse order so they don't line up and start looking down California Avenue and go, what? What's it coming from the wrong direction? But tell everybody it's going from the park to Kaala because I bet you, there'll be, at least it's going to be maybe 100-something people that will be looking down.
Right, 76 years, the parade has been going Kaala to the park uphill. In the 77th year, we're going downhill from the park to Kaala.
So actually, Rin, can I give you the historical fact?
Go ahead.
So the parade, because my dad was, back in the day, the parade actually came from across the bridge. They were lined up that way. So it'd come across on Comehameha Highway.
Across the airplane bridge?
Yep. And they'd come up and then it would turn onto California Avenue and go up. So actually, that was the original route from, in the originals.
And it still went right up California?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was, it came, it came up onto Comehameha first.
You can see all those people at the shopping center. That's the largest crowd during the parade.
Yeah, because they used to put the banner across Comehameha Highway.
And they're all going to say, what? The parade is down there. Well, it's going to start at the shopping center anyway. So they'll see the best.
And for those who are new to Waihau, we are the last of the Veterans Day Parade. No one else does the Veterans Day Parade. And that's why our parade is so long because it's the only Veterans Day Parade that exists. So we are the last, we are the stalwart. We're not giving this up. It, we will continue to do it. But that's why you, when you, it's a long line of participants.
There are lions that are going to shuttle people from the bottom of parade. You leave your car down by Kaala and you can shuttle up to the park. So when the parade ends, your car is there. The last entry in the parade is going to be the trolley reserved for the veterans. So veterans want to ride the trolleys. You're going to make reservations with Lee. First, you've got to reserve all the seats. But whatever seats are available, the public can ride. I know the Waihau rainbows want to ride the trolley. So you're in the, you're the last entry. You're waving and you're saying mahalo veterans. Again, that's one of the requirements. The Girl Scouts said, we have mahalo veteran signs. How come you don't? And I looked around and I said, you're right. We're just carrying our same Waihau lion sign. So now it's a requirement. Everybody carry mahalo veteran signs, okay?
Let me just add, virtually, any questions virtually? And any questions here? Okay, I think we're good then.
Thank you.
Round of applause for Rin. All the work you folks are doing. Thank you very much, everyone. We're going to move over into our elected officials section. And right, starting off first on 8A is Mayor's Representative, Kevin Auger.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Community Members. I'm Kevin OJ. I'm the Deputy Director of Housing for the City and County. And this is my first board meeting, so I'm very excited to be here. Because it's my first board meeting, we didn't have a meeting last month. There's some carryover items. So I'll try to address those. But if I'm being redundant for any reason, just let me know and I'll move on to the next one. But I guess first, this month's highlights from the Mayor's Newsletter. As some of you may have heard, the ACLU fired a lawsuit against the city trying to prohibit the city from enforcing public welfare laws and take away the city's ability to enforce those laws to protect and safeguard the public. The city disagrees with the ACLU's lawsuit. Homelessness is a complex and pressing issue. It affects us all. So the mayor wants to assure everyone that the city is committed to addressing this issue with compassion and with empathy. And will focus on finding long-term solutions. Safe and Sound Waikiki Initiative marked its first year on September 5th. And Mayor Blenjotti joined prosecuting attorney Steve Arm, Councilmember Chair Tommy Waters, and community and law enforcement leaders to celebrate the anniversary of that initiative, which has been very successful. We had a number of affordable housing successes this month. Capale Parkway broke ground just about two weeks ago. That's a 400-unit affordable housing development that'll serve the 30% to 60% area median income folks. So very, very affordable. Hollyvale, which is a senior housing project in Chinatown, just opened up and its residents are now moving in. That's a senior housing project. And the city just closed on Kiapi, which is a vacant land parcel in Capale. It's a terrific parcel because it came with all the development rights that are already in place. And it has a construction development plan for 40 affordable housing units. We'll be putting a request for proposals out to developers for that project probably early part of the year. Last week was fire prevention week. Obviously, with the situation in Maui, everybody takes that very seriously. Wildland Fire Season is a year-round event year and a while. And obviously, it's been very dry. And we've had significant potential increases and threats as a result of those drought conditions. So please visit the Honolulu Fire Department websites where you can pick up tips and also on their Facebook pages and Instagram account. Another announcement was Oahu's parking meters, meters got an upgrade. The city's credit card-friendly and on-street parking meters have been upgraded to better serve the public. These 3G, 4G connected parking meters were modernized to allow users to pay for parking safely, securely and quickly. And by the end of the year, many of the coin-operated meters will be upgraded to the system as well. The September 2023 edition of the Mayor's Highlights Newsletter can be found online at HTTPS www.1ohahu.org/newsletter. Departmental issues, these are follow-ups and some of them go back to June. One was a question regarding or concern raised about the lack of Hawaiian names for the Skyline service. And I guess the question was, could Hawaiian names be considered for the service and/or railcars? And is a blessing for the railcars under consideration as is done for emergency vehicles? The city branded the Honolulu Rail Transit Project with the name Skyline. And it will be updating the images associated with the skyline with the native Hawaiian bird, the Manu Oku. Through community outreach, we discovered an overwhelming opinion that our island's residents were tired of the negativity associated with rail and with Hart. We also tested the rail and the train to which respondents did not find favorable. Respecting the community's voice, we chose Skyline. That name directly is directly reflected of the elevated line that traverses the planned corridor between Capale and Honolulu. My understanding is the Department of Transportation and Services is already looking into naming the railcars and intends to include cultural awareness and sensitivity in that process. The railcars had previously been blessed and DTS may consider a small ceremony to commemorate the railcar names. Waihau Civic Center. I guess the question was, the project's been waiting for a permit approval for over two years. What is making the process take so long? And what is the time in the future that permits can be approved? I guess construction and grading plans were first submitted to the DPP in mid-December 2021 for required review. Since that time, the consultant has been addressing DPP's review comments through various resubmittals. It looks like those plans are anticipated to be approved imminently, which will allow issuance of the construction permits to commence on the site work. I'm sorry, I don't have a better update for that. But my understanding is, it's, pardon me? It started already, so I guess it's been approved, which is, which is great. Pearl Highlands Parking Ride. What can Hart share about the decision to eliminate the Pearl Highlands Parking Ride? The board would like a representative at the September meeting, I guess, which was canceled. The 1,600-stall Pearl Highlands Parking Garage has been deferred from the federal scope of the project due to its significant construction costs. The estimated cost of the parking garage, based largely on the bid prices that were received during the 2020 procurement process, was over $200 million. And that worked out to roughly $200,000 a parking stall, which is pretty excessive. I guess Hart felt that was unreasonable. And DTS and Hart have committed to exploring other options for the construction of the parking garage. There's currently no timeline or acceptable solution for the garage. Hart will update the community in the future as plans develop. And I think that's it for my updates.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, June.
Hi, my name is Jun Yamuro. And I actually brought this up with Kelly two months ago. And it may sound like I'm an anti-bicyclist, but I used to be a very avid bicycle rider until my doctor told me, actually, don't do so, don't ride anymore for various medical reasons. But the only reason why I'm bringing this up is that right now, the lines are fading. It's going to be due for repaint, painting. And I say either eliminate it now or maybe as an alternative, maybe the signage should be similar to what is in Malani Town where you don't use as much paint. So the cost would go down. And the reason why I'm saying this is because in my, in the 10-plus years that it's been there, previously, I reported to Kelly that I only saw one rider using it properly. I can honestly say that I saw somebody last, two weeks ago, using it properly. So that's two in over 10 years. So that's a very low percentage of people using it correctly. Because most people either go the wrong way, they ignore it, they go on the sidewalk. And I noticed that because, like I said, I was an avid bike rider. So I noticed that people are not using it properly. And for the, what, two, three blocks that it encompasses, it's not being used. It may not be worth it anymore. And when I first saw it coming up, I said, that's a good idea. And now hopefully, maybe the city And hopefully, maybe the city will put in or extend it all the way up California and down to the bottom. But that probably is not in the works because of costs. And I don't see it happening. So maybe we should not, somebody should take a look at it. And, you know, save the cost of repainting the whole damn thing.
Thanks for that.
Okay, thank you, June. Any other questions, Aaron?
Hi, good evening, thank you for the thorough updates. I have a question, you mentioned in Capilay and another areas that you're working on affordable housing, or the mayor's working on affordable housing. I've noticed that a lot of the projects are like single-family homes, tiny homes, or duplexes, very small buildings. At some point, we're gonna need to build up. Are there any projects that are larger capacity?
Yeah, there sure are. So I joined the city about three months ago, and I had been working for the Hawaii Public Housing Authority. And they've got several large projects, Mayor Halaava area that are coming online. We're working, the city's working directly with developers that are bringing on large projects. Capilay Parkway is a great example. That, it's 400 units, it's a huge site, I don't know if you, it just broke ground two weeks ago. We're also advocating and really trying to develop the recent Bill 7 that was enacted, so we can build up smaller 30, 40, 50-unit developments in business districts, where we could absolutely bring the density that's required and build infill locations. So that's something that we're strongly advocating.
True, because I'm not mentioning for Wahiwa, but in high-density areas where there's already large buildings, you know. I know you hear of California, that they have a lot of ordinances where they can't build higher, and so that's creating homelessness. But those kind of things don't happen in Honolulu, we're looking towards.
We're excited about the Bill 7 project, since they are infill location and they're privately financed, which is a really big deal. The challenge with trying to build affordable housing is it's very expensive to build. The cost of a unit now, it's nearing California-type pricing. It's $500, $5 and a half, $550,000 a unit, which is excessive. And it's very, very difficult to finance those. We use low-income housing tax credits to finance affordable housing in Oahu. And the capacity to do that is limited by state private activity bonds. And the maximum number we can use, units that we can build annually is typically around 1,400, 1,500 units. So we've got to find other ways to do it, that's why we're excited about Bill 7.
Any other questions from the board? Questions, any questions virtually? Dean, go ahead.
Good evening, sir. First of all, I wanted to thank the mayor, DTS, and those hands that were involved in actually coming around and hearing the communities outcry for Hawaiian names to the rail trains. That is a great, great and blessing to know that that is finally coming around. And like you, I'm also a former employee of HBHA. And I see many, many units, like my former member was saying, where, you know, they are single-dwelling homes. But yet, you know, I know the mayor had announced, I think it was about a year ago, exactly that several high-rises more in the urban area, going up towards giving homes. And at least I know of two homes that are gonna be, two buildings that are gonna be dedicated to Kupuna housing. So thank you very much for all of that.
Sir?
Thank you, Dean. Any other questions virtually? And how about here, any questions? Yes, okay.
Hello, thank you for coming out and giving us that debriefing. Just quick questions, you'll have to bear with me a little bit here. I'm a little unfamiliar with the affordable housing. Is there a limit to the cost? Or?
Point of information, Madam Chair, could the speaker please identify himself?
I'm sorry, what was that again, could you repeat?
Oh, my name is Diego Karanza.
I think I spoke over you, if you can repeat again?
My name is Diego Karanza.
Thank you.
So with regards to the affordable housing, is there set limits to the rent cost? Or how does that work?
Yeah, there sure are. So for instance, you know, we just talked about the Capilay Parkway, which will be available for residents earning the 30% to 60% of the area median income. So the maximum rent that you can charge is roughly, if somebody's earning 60% of the median income, the rent would be approximately 30% of that income. So that is the maximum that you can charge.
Okay. And then I saw that there's expanding the preschools and that early education. Do you know, like, what preschools they're gonna be? Or like, is it Head Start? Are they gonna be affordable? Kind of, what does that look like?
Oh, sorry, so I don't understand the question?
So just starting off, do you know, like, who is putting on those preschools?
I don't, but there's a, maybe somebody else has got the answer behind you.
Yeah, yeah.
You can, go ahead, you can answer it now.
So the Ready-Kick initiative is really developed by Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke. And we are gonna have one classroom at Wahiwa Elementary, and maybe two classrooms. So we're also kind of in line with Ka'ala and then Halemono too. So we're poised to really expand PK here.
Perfect, saved my bill.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, I'm sorry, Leanne?
Hello, my name's Leanne Baker, and I had a question. It was Alia Bridge, I think they had that blue and white building by Honda Tofu. And it's still in problems with the sewer connection?
I think there are additional problems, not just with, not just with that.
So what's the problem with that? Because, you know, it helps health.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Kevin, it's nice to meet you. And as you walk back, I just want to point out that we did have Alia here. And so you might wanna have some connection on that one. Thank you, yes, go ahead, Dean.
Oh, this is a quick follow-up for the chair, for the mayor's rep.
Oh, yeah, a quick question, I'm sorry, Kevin, if you can stop by this mic? Dean has one more question for you.
Oh, sure.
Sorry.
I don't know if you heard earlier, sir, regarding the dirt bikes or the motorbikes, problem issue that we're having out here. And so if the mayor could get together with council, as well of our state elected officials, to come up with some type of licensing for these vehicles, that would be really helpful in assisting the police department. When, as a citizen sees a violation, they can get the license number down and then pass that on to HPD for enforcement.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, and you know, because the license doesn't have to, still, it can restrain or restrict the vehicle from being street use. If it's a motorbike for dirt, you know, for the off-road use is what I mean. And that could be included in the law. So if that could be passed on up to our legislators, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Pass it on, Mr. Harris.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean, thank you, Kevin. Thank you, absolutely, thank you. Okay, moving on to our second elected official from Councilmember Matt Wires office. Is Kelly here, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires office. So just a couple of things on the newsletter. Councilmember was honored to participate with Rep. Perusso last week at the Wahiwa Town Hall. Couple stuffs there on the back, couple legislative updates. Councilmember did introduce an emergency preparedness legislative package. That's coming up this week, it's committee week this week. Resolution 23239. Unfortunately, the MLU committee has been canceled, I'm not sure why. So that resolution's not gonna be heard. Resolution 23240, it's up for hearing at budget on Tuesday at 11:00 a.m. That is going to request the city administration to present annual budget recommendations to address long-term emergency preparedness. And then Resolution 23241 is up for hearing at Public Safety, which is on Thursday at 1:00 p.m. Councilmember introduced or co-introduced this with Public Safety Chair, Councilmember Okimoto. And this urges the city administration to establish a working group to provide recommendations on long-term emergency preparedness regarding residential housing. Couple updates from the community. I'm sure you already seen the Delianators and then the restriping. I know, thank you, thank you for your patience. And thank you to DTS for getting out there, and DFM, I believe, for the restriping. Also, I don't know if you've noticed, but the Wahiwa Police Department parking lot has also been restriped. And some of the other issues, I don't know if anybody from Whitmore, but Halemono traffic. Our office is working with DTS as well as HPD to try to mitigate some of that traffic congestion still. Let's see, oh, and a couple of months ago, Glen Avenue, up by the Wahiwa Assembly of God Church, there was like an issue with the, I guess, the guy ran over the island or something. Anyway, DTS did go out. The lights are not warranted, but they did find that the the painting and then as well as some of the signage is faded. So there is a work order that's been issued, and they will go ahead and take care of that. And then, things is also from a couple of months ago, North Kane Street, somebody had asked about having the parking stalls be diagonal as opposed to the way it's currently. I believe it's parallel. DTS did go out and deemed that it is not warranted at this time. I believe this was in, or brought up because of the Civic Center and the, I guess, the what do you call it, I guess, the, whatever you're gonna call it. Anyway, sorry, I lost for words. Anyway, they deemed that the project, the Civic Center project has provided, is going to provide adequate parking. So diagonal stalls are not warranted. And that's it for me, anything for Councilmember, I can take that back.
Board members, any questions for Councilmember Wires office? Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
I know the Councilman Matt addressed this before on the issue of the 64% raise. And I think, if I remember correctly, he said initially he was against it. But then there was a reason he voted for it, or was for it. Could you?
He was against it.
He was against it the whole time. Okay, thank you.
Any other, yes, June?
I think what it was is that when they wanted to put it up for a vote, that's what the issue was, that he saw no way of getting a majority. So he just decided not, yeah. Yeah, it didn't come up for, it didn't come up as a vote.
I have a question in regards to that. So the three that were against it, did they not get their raise?
The three councilmembers?
There were three members that were against it.
That I'm not sure, I would need to look.
And they, I know there was a big hullabaloo about you having to put it in writing and this and that and timelines, so. So they're all, they all get the same amount?
But as far as the three that, you're seeing the three that opposed it, if they didn't?
Yes, because they said they were not going to, they were not going to accept it. And then I kind of lost track of.
Actually, from what was, came out on the news is that they did, there wasn't any way for them to not take it. So some of them, I'm not sure if it was Councilman Oba, but he directed a way to.
Give it back.
Paycheck, yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, he's giving it back.
There wasn't something that they could say, I don't want to take it. It was either everybody or nothing.
I think he mentioned something about donating it or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. But it will still hit their, yeah, it will still hit their paychecks.
But if you're still on their paychecks, but whether they are giving it back, that's a private matter for them, yeah.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
What's that? Dean, is that, are you, do you have a question?
Oh, no, ma'am, why?
Oh, yeah, the hand is up, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I'll take it down.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? And Dean, and others, virtually, any questions for Councilmember's office? Casey, none, and here, any questions for Councilmember's office? Okay, thank you, Kelly.
One more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
I think, because I, a little bit later, I have question newsletters from Councilmember. And then I also have, I'm sorry, a sign-in sheet. If anyone wants to get electronic updates from Councilmember's office, you can go ahead and sign up as well.
Okay, thank you, if everyone heard that, sorry about virtually, but there is a sign-in sheet. If anyone wants to receive Councilmembers newsletters, then you can sign in and put your email address on that. Okay, we are on Governor's, I don't see, yeah, I don't see. Is anyone on virtually for Governor's office? I don't think he's, I don't, I don't see, I don't think. Okay, we're gonna move on to Senator's office, David. Hi, David.
Hey, Chair, can you hear me or see me?
You're good, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone, David Cho for Senator Delacruz's office. Sorry, I gotta use my phone, because my laptop WebEx is not working right now.
No problem.
Wait, so the first thing I wanted to highlight is the coconut rhinoceros beetle response that we had last week. So I'm sure many of you saw the articles on CRB investing the Royal Palms on Royal Palm Drive. So we heard that from the residents. Actually, we heard from one of the residents on Royal Palm who contacted our office maybe two weeks ago. And then we worked with DOA and DLNR to get a response last week out. Basically, we, when we went out to Royal Palm Drive, we set out, I believe, six traps throughout Glen, maybe one or two on Nickles, and then two or three on Royal Palm Drive itself. And so what DOA and DLNR are now gonna do is they're gonna wait another couple of weeks to see how much trapping, how much, how effective the traps are. And they'll be spraying, because that's the only way to effectively treat CRB right now. You need to spray a pesticide onto the tree itself so that it can kill the pest. And what they would also be doing is getting info out to residents in the area. But also, what we plan on doing is a mailer out to Wahiwa residents, because Wahiwa is very wet. So if you keep a lot of plant material or mulch on your property, it's a perfect breeding ground for coconut rhinoceros beetle. So if you have wet mulch or plant materials on your property, the best thing to do is actually get rid of mulching material from your property and then put it into the green bin and make sure that there aren't any larvae. And if you, if you think there is CRB, CRB is mostly found during the evening hours. So sometime between maybe 4:30 to 7:00 is the best time to actually see them. So we will let the residents know when DOA will be coming back. We are still in week one of after the traps being installed. So we'll wait, we'll have another week or two to see how effective the traps are. If you want to learn more about coconut rhinoceros beetle, you can go to www.crbhawaii.org. And if you think you see CRB in your area, please call 643-PEST. And your reports should include your name, location, time. And if you're able to find CRB, please put it into a sealed container or a plastic bag and just store it in your freezer. Just wear protective materials like gloves or use a paper towel to pick up the CRB when you do find it. The next thing is, I know everyone was really excited about the groundbreaking for the Civic Center. I can, you know, that actually the day that ceremony happened, DAGs literally picked up their, really, I believe, that day. So the day that day or the day before, so construction is active. And we're actually asking the construction management company, because you probably all see the graffiti that's now on California Avenue. DAGs actually has a policy for their construction, for the contractors, to clear any graffiti that's on the dust screens. So we're asking DAGs to actually address that, because we would rather not have that up for the next, you know, for the duration of the construction period. So they're saying, we just broke ground last month, September 20, sorry, in September. And they're looking at 2026 for opening. And they'll let us know if they're able to speed up anything. Um, and they're looking at 2026 for opening, um, and they'll let us know if they're able to speed up anything throughout that process. Um, and finally, one thing I wanted to address was, um, so we got the Civic Center project started. Um, and now the library project is the next project that we really want to address. So, you know, we've, um, come to the board and provided reports to you about the new library building. Um, excuse me, and it's a forty-two million dollar project that the legislature budgeted back in 2021. Um, and we went through the process, the, the community came out and had a chance to provide their input, um, I believe, between 2021 and 2022. Um, and you guys work with the University of Hawaii's Community Design Center while they were doing their outreach. Um, and now that we have, went through that process, the Department of Education is actually going through the process of putting through a, a bid proposal so that they can get the project out for design and construction. Um, but the forty-two million dollars, uh, that is currently stated for the project, um, it requires the Governor's approval and it needs the Governor's approval by the end of this month, because DOE needs time to spend down the forty-two million dollars, like, because the forty-two million, it's a capital project. So it has a three-year shelf life, so you can, you have three years to spend the money down. Um, but the funds lapse next year, June 30, 2024. But just because the Governor releases the money in June, on June 1st, 2024, that doesn't mean the department, realistically, you can spend out the entire amount within a 30-day span. So they, they like to have enough cushion so that they can spend the money down, uh, efficiently and they have enough time to do it. So they're really, they're looking at the end of this month and we're asking people to contact the Governor's Office. Um, if you did pick up a little piece of paper that we had dropped off earlier, um, this, in this evening, um, I believe our legislative aide, uh, left something on the table. Um, it says, Save Waihewa Public Library Project, there's a QR code on there. If you scan the QR code with your, with your, with the camera on your phone, it actually, uh, brings up the link to the Governor's, uh, contact page, so you can send in your comments through that website. Or you can, uh, go through the Governor's website itself online or also call 586-0034. Again, that's 586-0034, um, and we're looking for people to send in their comments by the end of this month. As much as you can, please get the word out, and we hope that we can, um, get the monies released for this project. Um, for the pedestrian bridge, I will provide a update at the next board meeting, cause I do need to get more information on that, and I will have that information for November.
Thank you, David. Lot of information. Um, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, David, can you mention again about Wednesday night's meeting?
Yeah, so we're just, um, meeting with a couple of folks, uh, at, uh, Waihewa, uh, sorry, not Waihewa, Leiluhua Library, um, at the, uh, 6:00 PM on Wednesday, because we're just seeing who can come out to support the project itself. Um, and we're asked, I know, like, the friends of the library, friends of the Waihewa Library have submitted comments already to the Governor's Office. Um, also, uh, Waihewa CBA is looking to do so as well. The complex area itself has submitted comments, and we've been asking, uh, multiple people to actually contact the Governor's Office. So if you want to learn more information, uh, please come at that time.
Any other questions from the board? Yes, go ahead, TJ.
David, do you have an update on the Avocado Street property? I know you had brought it up a couple of meetings ago about the Senator wanting to purchase it and building a substation for DOFA or DLNR or DoCare or one of those.
Yes, it was DoCare. Um, those monies are actually still with the Governor as well. Um, the Governor identified several appropriations in the budget that will require his approval, um, even though they were cash projects, um, and typically, uh, for cash projects, if, if a department received, uh, general funds, which is cash, they normally get it automatically. But he identified, um, several million dollars in projects that cannot go forward without his approval. Um, and that was a result of what happened from Lahaina. Um, so, uh, that project is currently wrapped up in those projects that require his approval. So those projects need to be approved by the current Governor before they can proceed.
Thanks. So can you, um, see what you folks can do about actually getting that piece of property managed? Because it's, it's a fire hazard waiting to happen. Uh, I don't know if you've driven past there recently, but, um, yeah. It's, it, the, the fences are all torn down, the homeless have been, um, living in both buildings, and there is rubbish and there are tires piling up. So it's really, it's really sad to get off the freeway, come into Waihewa, and when you make that turn into the area to see that property in such disarray. And it, it, it really is gonna become a public safety, health, uh, condition.
Okay, understood.
Okay, go ahead, June.
Okay, um, this pertains to the pedestrian bridge, but the question actually is for the Chair. When the presentations was made by the state to, um, build a, the pedestrian bridge, uh, if I recall correctly, the online count was that the majority of the people of this area actually supported the bridge. At that time, I believe you questioned that number. Um, did you ever follow up on that?
We did, and I didn't get a response back, cause we had, cause they did an online survey, and we did a public meeting here and a public meeting at Whitmore.
Right.
Yeah.
So, but you never got an answer back. May, maybe you should follow up one more time on that?
We, we did multiple times on that one. Yeah, multiple times, but yeah, not a problem. We can always follow up on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other, yes, Michelle?
I'm, I know a lot of my neighbors and myself included have mulch piles. And so could we just get traps rather than getting rid of our mulch piles?
Well, the trappings is not, uh, the traps aren't necessarily effective, because, um, what the traps really allow for is to understand where or how bad the infestation is. Uh, where it's, it's difficult, because the traps are used to kind of assess the area, but then they could be breeding elsewhere and then coming to certain areas to feed or breed, um, and then leave. So i- it's really difficult just to address CRB infestations with traps only, because those only are, um, I guess, a, a test to see how bad it is. It's not necessarily gonna address the infestation itself. Um, the only way to really get rid of CRB is to spray or maintain mulch on your property. So what they, what DOE, DOE actually recommends is that you either get rid of your mulch piles or you manage your mulch piles efficiently, so that you're not allowing for, um, uh, wet material to basically just stay on your property for days in, in and out. Um, so what they say to do is inspect and manage as the most effective way to stave off CRB outbreaks. Um, and if you ever do, if you want to keep your mulch on property, what they do, uh, recommend is that you, uh, wrap a, a trap around it. Uh, what that allows for is, uh, not, um, not a trap, but a netting around your mulch, because the netting will catch the CRB, uh, beetles, which are about, uh, maybe one to two inches in length. Um, and when they go through the holes of that fencing, they'll get caught in it, and then you'll be able to catch the beetle through the netting. Um, and for larvae, it's best to catch CRB, obviously, in the larvae stage, because it's when they won't be flying around and going, you know, in and out of your property, basically.
Thank you, David.
Chair, just had?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, so David, if you could, uh, if you don't mind, if you could follow up on Chair's request for the data from the pedestrian bridge survey, because from what I understand and what I remember finding is that a lot of the online responses to the pedestrian survey bridge were not IP addresses that could be traced back to the 96786 community, nor could a lot of the demographic information support that residents in our district supported that bridge. And that's why, like, what, uh, our, uh, gentleman here was saying earlier, 99% of the people that attended the community meetings were against, and if I'm not mistaken, are still against the pedestrian bridge in our community. So any data that you can provide would be helpful. Appreciate it.
Okay.
And, and TJ, you're correct, because the two meetings that we had, the one here was 100% against it. The one in Whitmore, there was only one person who supported it and everyone else was against it. So, yeah, so that was the two meetings that we held for the community. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any questions virtually? Yes, go ahead, Dean.
Uh, David, isn't it true that this pedestrian bridge is being, uh, federally, uh, funded as well as also being required since Kamehameha Highway cannot support any pedestrian safety alongside from Whitmore, uh, Whitmore to Waihewa?
Uh, I will have to get back to you, um,
Yeah.
the rest of the questions, um, a- as long as, um, once I get the, the minutes from the board meeting, and then I'll try, I'm trying to take notes as we go right now. But, um, I, I'll try to capture those questions and, and take it back.
I do recall, yeah, because I recall DOT, uh, indicating that they were unable to put a sidewalk or a pedestrian safety zone along Kamehameha Highway between Waihewa and Whitmore. And this is why the bridge factor was brought up, and, uh, they were moving along with it. Thank you.
Hey, Dean, this show, uh, that issue has not been come, come up or been approved by OMPO.
No, 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 but that was between two agencies, Fed and State DOT.
Yeah, but those would need to be approved by, by OMPO.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I'm just saying that, that when I looked into it and spoke with DOT, that's what I was told, that that's why it was being done, because they could not create a safety factor or safety area on Kamehameha Highway between Whitmore and Waihewa.
And actually, um, Chair, if I could just, uh, reiterate, at the meeting that was held at Helimano Cafeteria, Helimano Elementary School Cafeteria, this was not a project that was getting federal funds. It was thirteen million dollars, and somebody can correct me on the thirteen million, but it was thirteen million dollars that was gonna be fully funded by the state. And at that time, that's why the community was speaking up against the project, because there were other things that could have been done with the thirteen million dollars that would have better supported our community. So there were not, there were no federal funds in, included in that project, and there were no, there was no talk. And like, uh, uh, Member Francher said, OMPO would need to be part of that conversation, and OMPO was not at any time part of that conversation.
Okay, if I may follow up on that, I mean, it was, I was there at the meeting myself, and I heard that too, TJ. But I'm saying, okay, maybe I misspoke and said federal funds. The federal funds are for Kamehameha Highway, but DOT is supported through federal funding.
Okay, I, I think we're gonna, but, um, I think that, David, you're gonna check into this, right, and follow up for us?
Cause Yes.
Yeah, cause we have a lot of, we're all, I think, trying to remember how everything, uh, took place. So we'd appreciate your, your help on this, so that we can all, um, get the correct information. Thank you.
Let's have another meeting.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Questions virtually, any other questions? Uh, questions from the, uh, over here, from? Okay, none? Okay, very good. Um, before, David, I just want to add two things that, that I have here. And this is from, um, this is from Garrett Horimoto, the project architect. And he said, uh, that the Waihewa Center for Workforce Excellence Project, where the library is, is currently on hold, and an update will be provided if and when the project proceeds. I just wanted to make sure, um, that's a statement that he issued, so that you're aware of that as well. Um, and speaking of the library, I also neglected to introduce that online, we have Andrea Wade, who is the branch manager of the Waihewa Public Library. She's a librarian for. Um, and we will be scheduling her to be at our next, uh, neighborhood board meeting, so that we can meet her. But she's also, um, been participating in this meeting as well. Okay, so thank you very much. We're gonna move on to, um, Representative Amy Caruso, thank you.
Aloha, Chair and board members. Um, so I'll just start with the most recent item, which is the pedestrian bridge. Um, the monies were released, uh, it's not thirteen million dollars, it's thirty-five million dollars. And, um, the monies for the centralized kitchen and Whitmore Hub have also been released. I think, I believe that's around fifty million, but David can correct me. Um, and, uh, I just spoke with the Governor when I left the room um, to urge him to release the funds for the library. Um, there was some misunderstanding, I think. Um, it, it is true that this district does receive a great deal of state funding, a disproportionate amount. Um, but it is also true that that project in particular is strongly supported by the community. So, um, I am hoping that he will be able to release those funds. Uh, I think it's important to remember the context. So we do have a fiscal crisis, um, given the Maui wildfires and all the work we're gonna have to do now, now that we understand the situation better, um, to better prepare for emergencies and disasters and climate change. So, um, uh, I, I understand the situation the Governor's in, so we should kind of keep that in mind as well. Um, and we may have to postpone that project for a short time, but I hope not. Um, so I'll just, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the library. Yes, so, um, but as far as I understand, the monies for the Whitmore Hub centralized kitchen have already been released, and the monies for the pedestrian bridge have also already been released. So that means those projects are moving forward. Thirty-five million dollars. Yes, correct. We cannot, it's already released, and it can only be used for that purpose. I mean, I, I couldn't agree with you more, but yeah, but that's not, that's not how it works. Yeah, I agree. We should change the way that things work, but that is how it works. I agree. And the people online cannot hear you, so they think that I'm just talking to myself. Um, so I want to catch folks up on what I've been doing. Um, the first, obviously, in response to the wildfires, um, the House has formulated, um, six working groups. I'm on two of them. I'm on the Prevention of Wildfire Working Group, and I'm also on the, um, Environmental Remediation Working Group. We've been meeting very frequently, hearing from all kinds of experts, developing a report. We're gonna share that report out with the community and seek public comment, and then we're gonna finalize the report and use it as a basis for legislation for the coming session. So that's one area of work. Um, we just had community town halls, and we continue to seek feedback about, um, last session and moving into next session. Uh, and I, um, also serve as a Chair of Higher Education, so I've been, um, doing my due diligence. I've been visiting all ten campuses, and in addition, because I am passionate about Ag, I've been making a point to visit all of the CITAR sites. So CITAR is the College of Tropical Ag and Human Resources, and I have been visiting every one of those sites and seeing how tragically underfunded they are. Um, so that's two kind of elements of the work, but I think the third piece is the most important, so, um, bear with me. Uh, we, a couple of years ago, three years ago, this community came together and we developed a HARP process. So we participated in the county's, um, has Hawaii Hazard Awareness and Resilience Program, and went through a lot of training and developed a team and wrote a very long plan, like fifty-five pages. And now we have to do the next steps, which is kind of rebuilding the team, cause we've had some people move. Some of the, our members, our initial members were members of the military or people who have just since relocated. Um, so we're rebuilding that team, but we're also drilling down to the next level. So we're mapping out Waihewa, so Upper Waihewa, Central Waihewa, and Lower Waihewa. And we've come up with about twenty-three zones in those, like, uh, we'll just call them neighborhoods. Um, and what I'm working to do now is to identify neighborhood captains for each of those twenty-three areas in Waihewa. And we're also gonna be including Whitmore Village, um, because that's what our neighborhood board is, that's our structure. Um, and what I want to do is have those neighborhood captains, I'm gonna be providing them with a walkie-talkie. We, all of our lines are above ground. So parts of our community will be very easily cut off from other parts. And if we have cell towers go down, um, it's really important to us to have alternative means of communication. So I've been working with the folks, um, who do the ham radio, uh, in, in the community, and they've really been helping to educate me. And so we're setting up an alternative communication system. So if I come knock on your door and I ask you to serve as one of these captains, um, please be gracious. So if I come knock on your door and I ask you to serve as one of these captains, um please be gracious. Uh it's just asking you to hold it and maybe keep it charged in case of emergency so you can be kind of the point person for your neighborhood. And by neighborhood, like let's say Upper Waihewa, even from this point up, it's ten different neighborhoods. So they're not huge swaths of land. It's it's places you would normally walk to. It's your neighbors. So that's the kind of planning I'm working on right now and just kind of bringing everybody onto the same page. Um because I want us to be prepared, because I think the preparation um will help us kind of avoid what's happened in Maui. And I have also been working really closely with the um state owners of public lands that are adjacent to our community. So OHA and ADC, um and even Dole, and um working on their land management and asking the governor for to release additional funds to support better fuel reduction so we can really cut those grasses down and and start talking about how we can support our houseless community, right? So they're they're very endangered, right? So it's high, those are high-risk areas. So doing a lot of work around just prevention. So that's what I've been up to. If you have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, uh Rep, uh he's he's told for the governor about the library funding or the.
I did.
And he did he commit or?
He did not commit, but uh we had an extended conversation about it. And he explained to me, um you know, uh he walked me through the list of the monies that this community is already receiving. And I acknowledged that that was he was accurate, um but also that this project is important for the community.
Good. There you go. Thank you.
Is there anything from your standpoint that we can do about?
I am not advocating civil disobedience. But eh the history has shown that sometimes civil disobedience is, you know, effective. Yeah, I mean, I I uh once the money is released, the project moves forward. So I think um unless there is some rupture in in the way that project proceeds, I I don't really see any way to intervene, but I'm not really familiar with these kinds of projects, so.
Since the governor seems to be possibly hesitant on the library situation, if the community rose up against the bridge and said, you know, let's do the library instead. Here's your thirty-five million.
See, that's the tricky thing. We can't, we can't do that. Because when we allocate funds in the state budget, we can't pivot and then use them for something else because we haven't gone through a deliberative process. Like that's, uh I know, I know why you're asking for that, but it's not democratic. Like we, we went through a legislative process. This was um, you know. You can. That's what Ed Sniffin said. We can and we will. I know.
Point of information, Madam Chair. Whoever's talking needs to come up to a mic.
Understood. Thank you. Told you. Getting into, go ahead, um Joe, uh June, I'm sorry.
A- actually, I got two points. Um as to your point about using it for a regular road, from what I understand, this monies cannot be used for a regular road. That was what Donovan Delacruz had stipulated years ago, that the money that was allocated for this one, it would have to go back to the legislature and could be used for anything else as a legislature see fit. Not, it cannot be just redirected.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I guess the monies could lapse.
Yeah, and it would go back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I just don't think that makes.
Okay, um this question is is for our representative. Normally, I would not bring this up at all, but I think you need to hear this one.
Okay.
There's a rumor going around that you're against the Civic Center, so I think that's easy to be.
I'm so glad you brought that up, because um that's the second such rumor that I've had to squash today. Uh I'm not against the library project. I'm also not against the Civic Center. I think that there are good reasons for both of those projects, and I support them. And the community supports them from everything that I've heard. Um I'm not a contrarian, like I basically try to uh reflect the will of the community. So if I hear support for a project, I am usually unless I am privy to information the community doesn't have that is the basis for uh some disagreement, I'm gonna support what the community wants. So I support the Civic Center.
I think it may be related to the statement that you made that the funds were frozen by then-Governor Ege. So that's why I think people got that impression. No, I'm even the even the Civic Center was frozen for a little while by Governor.
I don't know about the, I don't know about Ege freezing the funds for Civic Center. I know that he was holding on to the funds for the pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, and I believe the Civic Center too.
I don't know about that. I never asked him to hold the funds for the Civic Center. I asked him to hold the funds for the pedestrian bridge.
Just to let you know.
Yeah.
I'm not, um like I said, I I hate to bring that up, but just wanted to give you an opportunity.
I'm glad, though. I can clear the air.
Yeah, clear the air. It's on air. Yeah, it gets recorded, so very good. Go ahead, TJ.
And just so you folks know, at the groundbreaking that they had, Representative Amy Peruso was there in the Ualii Li'i that day with the Oo in her dress, participating happily at the groundbreaking ceremony. So we do know that your heart follows your community, so thank you.
In the rain, too.
In the rain. So thank you.
But that was a blessing, right? The rain was a blessing.
Typical Waihewa.
Yes, it was beautiful. Um Eric?
I I want to hear the library project. Does that include storefront and that?
Yes, that's why it's so important.
Yeah. To California Avenue. Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Wait, hold on. Virtually, Dean, you have a question?
Uh just a quick comment, you know, civil disobedience, uh you know, it's not really Waihewa's way of responding to elected officials' demeanor. But what we can do, and I would highly suggest, is, you know, our community, get on the phone, call the governor's office, and just remind him how he got his seat. He has one more term that he will seek out. And uh you know, as far as it goes for our community receiving a large abundance of funding from the uh from the state. You know, our elected officials have worked very tirelessly and very hard at getting these projects passed. You know, and so I commend them, because, you know, we see them and we think of them, oh, you know, the cap, they're off-seasoned for nine months out of the year. No, they're still there, working every day. They go in, day in and day out, they work from home, and I and I commend them for this. And this is what the community gets, people who work hard for us. So please, if uh something like this is going on, call the governor, remind him, hey, you know, I vote, and you want my vote next time? Release the funds. Thank you, and good luck, good work, Jamie.
Uh I I appreciate that uh feedback very much. Um but I will mention that I was responding to a question about the pedestrian bridge. If people do want those monies released for the library project, um it's my understanding that the twentieth is the day that those monies expire. So if you are gonna call the governor's office, please do it as soon as possible, like tomorrow or the next day. He can hear that the community really does support this project, and it's not just us saying that.
Right. I'll send it, post it out on my webpage. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for our representative?
Uh Chair, I just had one more comment.
Yes, go ahead.
And while I uh, everybody knows I don't like the pedestrian bridge. And although Rep. did say that civil disobedience is not her way of doing things, it is our right as a community to stand up and voice our opinions about a project that is in our community. It is part of the democratic process. It is part of why we live in this society that allows us to say, yes, I want that project, or no, I don't want that project. So if you want the project, whether it be the library, the Civic Center, the pedestrian bridge, then by all means, make the phone call, stand up and support it. If you don't want a project, whether it be the library, the pedestrian bridge, or the Civic Center, by all means, that is your right as a community member to voice your opinion. And if you want to share and gather to do that, then by all means, that is your right. And don't let anybody tell you that it's not your right to express your opinion.
Okay, thank you, TJ. Again, I'm gonna just check any other questions at this point. Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you so much. It's really nice being here in person.
And again, we are at nine forty, everyone, and and we only had one presentation this time, but we are still very tight on time, and our neighborhood assistant wants to make an announcement, so go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Uh let me see if I still have this up. I'm gonna share a screen for everybody. Um but someone mentioned earlier, um one was getting on to our website, which is honolulu.gov slash NCO, Neighborhood Commission Office. So that's our website. Um but I wanted to show you the Google Drive, which is something I think that's new to this board. Some boards had it, but uh in July, when we started this new term for all thirty-three boards, we created a Google Drive. So let me just share a screen for the rest of the folks online. And this is a central database where we can host, so sorry, where we can um post all of the meeting materials. And it may not be something that was brought up during this meeting, um but you can think of elected official reports. For example, the governor's rep was absent tonight. Um they're dealing with all the Maui stuff. They submit their newsletter every single month. So instead of you guys not getting a report at all, we still get to show you the full document. So let me just take you there real quick. Um so these will be featured on your, they were on your last set of minutes, and that's a whole nother conversation. But anyway, we'll click on twenty twenty-three, we'll go to October. And currently, um this is what I wanted to mention. Someone brought up the flyer, and Board of Water was here earlier, and they talked about it, but they ran out of the printed copies. So you can find that here. We'll double-click, and this is their, you know, all their information. Same thing with the mayor's newsletter. All of this information. And so this is new. This has never been shared before with the boards. Um I hope everyone appreciates it, and even the Board of Water presentation in full detail. Because a lot of what happened was the minutes have always been a summary and not a transcription of what word-for-word happened in the meeting. And on top of what we're doing here, I did want to mention that on YouTube, again, you'll see that on the set of minutes, at the very top will be a link. And instead of going, he said, she said, what happened in the meeting, everyone gets to watch exactly what happened in the meeting. And that's why we ask everybody to please use the microphones, because that's what really matters. Our friend here is recording everything, and we need everything to go through the microphones for the reproduction to be worth it and accurate. Um so that's all I had, and I can answer any quick questions, but I know our contract is up to ten. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's nine forty, almost nine forty-five at this point. Board members, we are gonna once again have to uh push our board business to next month. Um everyone, please, uh we gotta try and get all this done, because it's coming at the end of the year. And we have several things that we all were concerned about and wanted to to complete. So having said.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh in regards to the last remark made by Member Charisma regarding uh civil disobedience and my comments, I don't want to be misconstrued that I was telling people not to be civil disobedient, but I said that was not our demeanor of Waihewa people. So I just don't want people, anybody, to understand that putting my words out there and someone else putting words in my mouth. Okay, I did not say do not be civil disobedient. I said, that's not the demeanor of Waihewa people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Okay, and having said that, it is nine forty-five, and with no other comments, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.